Thank you, Ashley. Welcome, everybody, to the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Supervisors meeting. Glad y'all could come out. We'll open the meeting with the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the wonderful time we had Saturday celebrating Amelia and the beautiful weather holding off the rain and allowing everybody to have a good, safe event. Thank you for everybody that's here this evening and watch over us as we conduct the county's business this evening. Bless each and everyone here and allow us to make the best decisions tonight to help the county move forward. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. White. I also want to say how good it was to have Amelia Day. It was put on very well. And our representative in Washington actually wished us a happy birthday to Amelia today on the House floor and gave a brief history of Amelia. That was well welcomed. Moving to the agenda. You have any amendments to the agenda? I have two. We need a need for closed session for a personnel issue. And we need to add a revised budget. We had to clarify a couple of dates on the budget. Mr. Gore said it does not require any public hearing. Just change and make sure the dates line up. With all that being said, entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments as presented.
Motion to approve them as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Motion to approve the amended agenda. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Brings us to our minutes. We've had the regular board meeting minutes and a continued meeting. Any questions, concerns, or comments on that? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them as a block. Motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. White. Motion on the floor to approve the minutes as a block. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Same thing with the April financial reports. Any comments, concerns, or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as a block. Make a motion approved. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Motion to approve the financial reports for April. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, folks, that brings us to the public comment time. This is your time to address the board. I would ask, try to keep it to three minutes. I don't want to put the clock out here. I want to hear from all the citizens. Try to keep it to three minutes. Please come up, state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Joy Worsham, sixty-five hundred Amelia Springs Road. I've missed the past two meetings, but I'm back. I had surgery and I'm back on track. And of course, you know, I'm here to talk about the Amelia County Food Pantry. First of all, I want to say thank you for so far the support that we have received from some of you on the Board of Supervisor. Also, thank you to everyone who came by to see us at Amelia Day and those that gave donations. But just want to continue to encourage you all. If you know of anybody volunteer, we still need some male manpower to help. I'm trying to retire my father from driving the van every day because, you know, he's up there in age. But if you know of any males, we're still also taking females, but anybody who wants to volunteer. Also still with monetary donations because we function fully off of donations. And like right now, we have to pay a high oil bill for the heat. We're also trying to, we've been working with Todd Fortune, I think, who you all work with, with trying to get a grant. It's been a little bit challenging. We need to build a new bathroom in the back so the volunteers do not have to walk all the way through the church, and then if the clients need to use it, they don't have to go all the way through the church. So if you know of anybody that can kind of help with supplies or support with that, we already have the amount of how much that will cost. But we're just needing some support and getting that taken care of. Also, in regards, like I said, with the monetary donations, the needs are getting greater. We're having people getting laid off. I'm sure you know with the Tyson's food situation. And the pantry has also become like a place of refuge and strength for some of these clients. They just even come by just for somebody to pray for them or give them an encouraging word. I've even just hugged some of them because of losing their jobs and needing food. So we still need your continued support in supporting us. As I always say, if anybody even wants to give on tonight, I'm here to receive. And also, I've been officially made the administrator. So I have my business cards that I want to leave with everybody. And should you come across anybody that have eggs, produce, milk, whatever, we stand in need of whatever you have to give, we will openly receive, and you can contact me, Joy Worsham, at my number. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worsham.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Scarlett Raloff, seventy-five hundred Pembleton Landing. And I'm here tonight as the president of APOA to speak about our current conditions of our animal shelter. While the recent release of the findings from the state vet's inspection of the shelter may have surprised some. To those of us that have been connected and working with the shelter, it came as no surprise. The shelter has needed repair for many years. I am sure everyone was relieved, as I was, to see in the monitor last week that the plan for repairs and upgrades has already been developed. We look forward to those updates and how these repairs are progressing. We were very happy to read in the monitor that we're going to be having conversations with the Economic Development Committee to move forward with the plan for the new shelter. Understanding this will be a very long process, the Well Done Needs Assessment Study performed by Shelter Planners of America that the county commissioned in 2021 and completed and presented in April of 2021 is one step already completed, and we look forward to getting that started. For those of you who know of APOA but not what we do, and for those of you that didn't know that we existed, I want to share our connection for everyone. APOA, Amelia Patrons for Animal Welfare, was formed in nineteen ninety-five by a group of very concerned citizens who were bothered by the suffering of the animals and the lack of an appropriate animal shelter in the county. Once the shelter was built, the primary focus was to provide spaying and neutering assistance to our residents. APOA provides a voucher to all qualifying residents of Amelia County and anyone who comes to our shelter to adopt an animal. We are currently sterilizing over three hundred animals a year. We paid out in 2021 to our local vets here forty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars. In 2022, we paid out thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. Our second focus is to port the shelter. There are numerous things that we buy for the shelter. Examples, food, litter, vaccines, microchips, the conjurbs. That's just the list of few things. In 2022, we spent seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars on these shelters' needs. That is just what we, APOA, are spending. We have numerous county residents that purchase food and supplies for the shelter on a regular basis. With that said, the current budget that we just adopted, was just adopted, there's only two thousand dollars for food for the year. For a large dog, the 2023 average cost is going to be forty-two dollars a month to feed one large dog. We can all do the math. Two thousand dollars per year will only last a few months, depending on the number of dogs that we maintain in the shelter. And what about the cats? They need to eat too. We would ask that the board would review with greater calculations for next year's budget. While APOA and the residents of the county helped to purchase the supplies for the shelter, once this budget is exhausted, we know where the residents should have to. The last of our three main priorities at APOA, most people probably have no idea that we're doing. And it's interesting that the pantry was here, the food pantry was here. We collect from two of our local businesses. We purchase what we don't yet, and we repackage in five- and ten-pound bags three hundred and twenty-five pounds of cat and dog food every single month to give to the food pantry for the county residents. To date, we have given back to the community fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-five pounds of dog food, dog and cat food for our beloved pets. In closing, I just want to thank each of you for your time and attention this evening. There's a large portion of this community that cares about our animals, and we look forward to the progress in the repairs at the current shelter, getting a passing inspection from our state vet, and the new shelter on the horizon. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Can y'all hear all right back in the back? Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Emma Rixman. I live at nineteen twenty-five Military Road, Amelia Courthouse. Many of you know that I am wildly concerned about our shelter for a variety of reasons. What you might not know is that Taylor and I had a meeting on Monday, and I'd just like to draw a little bit of attention to what he did not know or wasn't capable of answering. Any code related to how long animal control agencies have in Virginia to refer to vet care once an animal is in their custody? His quote was, "I'm not an expert on code in Virginia." Average individual or household income of our county residents. His quote was, "I'm not an expert on the census." What would indicate needing a request of a vet on scene during a call? Said he'd leave it up to his staff to kind of determine that, and he wasn't aware. What the salary range was of the new animal control officer, said he couldn't speak to that. There was no acknowledgement at all of managerial issues that this county has faced, consistent HR complaints. There was no accountability or action plan to correct personnel or managerial issues that I'm speaking to. He had no comment really on the public reputation of animal control in this county the last number of years, including being unable to be reached by dispatch on a regular basis or even staff members being photographed sitting in their car on duty. So what he did acknowledge was that we could have handled things better with the horse that died in custody that his letter didn't speak to. But what he didn't acknowledge or agree to was that there was actually reform needed or additional training needed in any capacity. So just thought I'd share that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Allison Cruz. I live in Jetersville. I'm here tonight, first off, I just want to thank Walik Harding for all of his years of service on the landfill advisory committee. And I would also be very happy and hopeful to be able to serve the community in that capacity as well. But that will be determined. And I also wanted to let y'all know that I will not be seeking reelection for the Piedmont Soil and Water Conservation District. My term will end the end of the year. I love what I've learned. I love the district, and I just will be frying other fish, so I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Anybody else?
My son Rowdy here. We were part of the horse issue going on in the county. And I know some of y'all know, Todd, I know you. I'm not a horse rescuer, and that's not what I'm into. I rodeo. I train horses, and I give riding lessons, and I do everything with horses for a living. And we had our heart set on the horse that died and the pony that had a missing eye. We had spoke to Brian and Leila, and the write-up in the news is completely not completely, it's not true all the way. There are a lot of facts that are true, but there are some that are not. He really wanted to come up and say some things about how he felt about the situation, but I'm not sure if he's feeling up to it or not. But he was really heartbroken about the pony. He had fallen in love with it while we were helping take care of him. But I feel like when we came to the county, to the, I guess, the resource officer, we were not helped in any way. We were never reached out to. She just kind of brushed us off as we were told that was going to happen if we did try to go anywhere with it. I'm not here to try to make a big spiel or anything, but I do feel like things should have been handled differently. The horse that died, we told the animal control officers before that it needed a big trailer to get into because I've dealt with horses my whole life, and the horse is not going to load into a little bitty box, especially when it's big. And this horse was beyond needing help. We feel like we gave a lot of suggestions. We offered help. I have a big four-wheeled trailer. We could have opened it up and had, you know, I have the stuff to do it. I have the friends to do it. And we had every way imaginable to prevent this horse dying, and it unfortunately was not taken care of that way. So my friend Valerie and I, we did all we could, but unfortunately, we were not asked to help with resources. And it's just been a mess since. Okay, you saying anything?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So I actually was not going to say anything tonight. I was just going to sit back and see how the situation unfolded and how it was handled. But when the agenda was amended to say that the resolution was only being corrected for dates, I decided that I did need to read what I had prepared. Good evening. There is talk going around that I don't really work with y'all, which is kind of funny because I send a whole lot of emails about county business, and the only responses that I ever get are from two. Since a few of you want to talk about working together and communication, but you don't respond to county business emails or come by the office when you're in the building or even call, I'll be forced to start using public comment section to address you. On May fourth, thirteen days ago, I emailed you all with concerns on the adopted budget resolution. It pertained to questions that both the treasurer and I need answers to. The way that it has been formally adopted poses problems for the system and/or our offices to manage. The way that it is written, everything gets assessed, then taxed at a four-fifteen rate. After I post the book, the treasurer would be the one that would have to adjust the tax liability by fifteen percent. This creates multiple concerns. The system's function is a major one. In fact, on May eighth, the software company stated that it could not be done without paying to write a program to specifically do it that way, to which I clicked Reply All, that it would be beneficial to amend the adopted resolution to lower the rate on regularly taxed vehicles so that it could be a smooth process like it was last year, and that my office would be the one to handle it. That was nine days ago. There is still no response to me saying, "We'll discuss this and get back to you." I have not been included or communicated with at all. Yesterday, I found out that the finance director has been including the state tax department and asking questions about it. I asked our treasurer if she had heard anything about it and was told that one of you asked her to send an email to our attorney. And then an updated agenda was sent in an email where the agenda was not altered to add this concern, but below it was added a new resolution where it changed the language to say, "The COR shall alter the tax liability." But I've already told you, the COR cannot alter the tax liability. Maybe, just maybe, if anyone on this board could communicate with the COR who brought the concern forward, instead of everyone going around me, we could solve these issues. But then again, that doesn't really suit some of y'all's claims that I don't work with you, does it? To the two that do respond to me, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Anybody else?
Not sure if this is the moment or not, but I guess we'll make it the moment. Good evening. Name's Al Kelsso. I live in nineteen six fifty-one Maple Court over here in Jetersville. Concerns are with the M-one rezoning over here in our area, over by the Emerson, whatever it is over there, that hundred fifty cent acres. My big concern, well, one of the big concerns is the fact that last meeting, I guess they brought a different plan, giving neighbors the two hundred feet, is what I'm understanding. We all know two hundred feet ain't crap. Reason being, I'm farther from the highway, but because of all the open land that's already over there, we get all the road noise at night. I still listen to the landfill at night. It's a nice little hum. I mean, if you sit outside, it is pretty pleasing. Not my point. Point is, take out all those trees, put in the buildings, it's only going to get louder. It's a nice neighborhood. It's a rural neighborhood over there. My wife and I moved here roughly eight months ago from the Hampton Roads area, lived there about twenty years, retired from the Navy, decided, hey, let's move away, go to central Virginia, enjoy some quiet, peace and quiet. Well, now I hear, hey, we're planning on putting in this industrial area. I don't want an industrial area in my backyard, literally in my backyard. That's crazy. If I had known that we were potentially going to put this in, pretty good chance my wife and I would have picked another place to move to. Reason being, we're here for the peace and quiet. I had to uproar at the thousand miles an hour Navy jets flying over for twenty years down in my last place. Neighbors in my lap. I like the fact that I don't have my neighbors in my lap here. I like the fact that I can see them, and they can come see me. But, you know, we appreciate what we have. Our property value is going to drop because as soon as you put in the industrial area over here, I can't go to somebody and say, man, we live in a great place. It's just a little loud on the outside. Don't worry about that. Now, if I say, hey, I live on three acres out here in the rural country, and you can't hear a lot of noise, people's like, ooh, that sounds pretty nice. Again, we don't know. Other part of it, I was reading in the paper today before we came up here, and one of the lines that really stuck out to me is says, we're in that little area, there is a rural preservation area. Not the smartest man in the room, but when you tell me preservation, that means we're not changing it. We're not digging stuff up and putting new stuff in. We preserve what we have. I may have wrong perception of what preservation means to a lot of people, but that's my perception of it. When we put the buildings in, those of us that live over there are going to be on the backsides of the buildings. So as it's all pretty and steel buildings or whatever, cruising down three sixty and check out our fancy signs and cool buildings and whatnot, we're back there with the trash. We're back there with the dumpsters. We're back there with the septic tanks. That's not enticing to anybody. I go to sell my home, say, ten, fifteen years down the road, people are going to be like, why would I want to live over there? That's nothing but a mess. So I ask you to please take into consideration our small, little neighborhood over there, and please don't vote for this M-one rezoning area. Let us keep it rural like it's rural so we can all enjoy it, and new people moving in can enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, there will be a public hearing on that subject later on. Yes, sir. Anybody else? All right, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on. V-Dot?
I first want to apologize if somehow you all managed to receive just a copy of my April Board of Supervisors report instead of the May one. So the error on my office's part, but I'll send you the updated report, and I'll report on the May report.
No, you're fine. From a maintenance perspective, our area headquarters has been primarily focused on mowing over the last month. The primaries in Amelia County are scheduled to be completed this week. They've been working on three sixty all week. And the secondary routes were mowed by our contractor. The first round of mowing was completed earlier this month for secondary routes. They've also been performing asphalt patching on many routes countywide in advance of some of our resurfacing schedules to provide some additional structure before those surface treatment schedules come through. From a land use perspective, we have provided comments on applicable cases, including a couple tonight. And I'll stick around and be available for any transportation-related questions related to those. Traffic studies and special requests. I have an update on Route six sixteen Genitoe and Route six forty-four Rocky Ford Road. Our traffic engineering group completed the review of that intersection. And for some historical information, because I frankly was not aware, the change to the stop condition at that intersection was done in 2018. And that review was done at the request of the board at the time because there was confusion about who had the right of way. It was a little confusing because Rocky Ford had it, even though the geometry of the road has that being kind of a straight-through movement. And so at the time, the stop condition was changed to allow for the southbound approach of Genitoe Road, which comes to a T, to have the stop, which is kind of the natural inclination of drivers to stop if you approach a T intersection. So that's when the signage was changed. And they did a review of everything that's out there now, and all signage that was recommended at that time is still in place. So they don't have additional recommendations for signs at this time. Secondary six-year plan. I've provided information on funding for the board. We do need a resolution to be passed just to approve the fiscal year twenty-four budget, even if you opt not to add any projects to the plan. And I can certainly provide a draft resolution for that, which will just show funding of the projects that you all have previously added to that secondary six-year plan. And then one additional is Route six twenty-eight Butler's Road. Mr. Easter requested that we take a look at the speed study there. And I'm just trying to get confirmation about the last speed study and whether that route is statutory fifty-five and forty-five for trucks. From a construction perspective, we've got several ongoing resurfacing contracts, latex-modified routes. Patching has been completed in Amelia, and the latex operations are expected to begin later this summer in July. Multiple routes on plant mix have been completed, and paving will resume at the end of the month on a few additional routes in Amelia County. For surface treatment, patching and eradication on multiple routes have begun, and surface treatment itself is not expected to begin until July. Slurry seal and cape seal, all project routes have received their first treatment of cape seal. And slurry seal application, especially in the courthouse area, is happening right now, this week, for the final slurry seal application. I did want to mention, there was a question last month about pavement marking problems, and and at least in the courthouse area, and I believe the turn lane at the high school was mentioned. Those were temporary markings, so, so if there's any other locations, let me know, but I think that those were just the temporary pavement markings. Route six twenty-one Brookhill Road in Cumberland County Lynchburg District just completed that project um, today, just west of the Appomattox, and it was reopened, so there's no longer a detour running through Amelia there. And then finally, an update on Folks Bridge Road, rural rustic. Um, we've received environmental clearance for that project. And so our area headquarters is scheduling pipe replacements and tree trimming um, that will occur in advance of the resurfacing that we'll do later this summer. Those are all the updates I have, unless you all have questions. Yes, sir.
I know there's not much you can probably do about it, but recently we've had some pretty good rains.
Yes, sir.
And we are in the Piedmont of Virginia, which means hills.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, I can take you to a couple of places that the leaves and the gravel and the dirt are that deep. I don't cross three quarters of the way across the road.
Okay.
And I know them environmentalists in Northern Virginia is gonna be screaming that we're disturbing stuff, but uh, you let them stay up there and y'all fix our roads down here.
So if you're-
Ditches, you know, when I was young and they used to come around all the farms and we pulling ditches, you got a place to put the field that we pulling out and you didn't see these roads stuff washed across them like you do now.
Right.
If a motorcycle's come down my road right now, they'd have a wreck. I mean, it's just a safety issue, I mean. It's, it's bad, and I know roads are worse than ours.
Yes, sir. I, I will note, um, we just reached, recently received an additional piece of equipment um, in both Amelia and Powhatan, a rotary ditcher um, to put on our slope mower. Um, so we have seen, we have had more production this year than previous years, but um, that's our goal moving forward is to really rely on that rotary ditcher, especially in Amelia County, more rural areas. We get a lot of production that way.
Well, now, if they do that, just curious, they wouldn't take it to the dump and dispose of it, would they?
No, sir. The rotary ditcher primarily just pushes the material on the backside of the ditch.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Question two, is there any works in the process about the bridge over the Appomattox River on six oh four?
So-
Of a replacement like six oh nine?
Right. So um, I, there's nothing guaranteed yet, but our bridge group has applied for state of good repair funding for a full replacement of that bridge. Um, and I have not heard back on the funding application yet, but I'll certainly um, keep you all in the loop if that is funded.
That is a heavy travel route. I mean, you know, you gotta interstate six oh four runs down through there.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, we would love to get the, the through truck restriction removed, or the truck restriction, the weight restriction on that bridge removed um, and be able to widen it as well. So that is um, an identified priority by our bridge group and they're actively seeking funding for it.
That's good. Thank you.
Yep. Yes, sir.
I had one complaint.
Okay.
I don't know if you can do anything about it or not. Bevels Bridge in one fifty-three.
Okay.
When you come to the stop sign.
Yes, sir.
You look back towards four sixty.
Uh-huh.
The vision is restricted from some bushes.
Due to vegetation?
Well, I don't know if there's bushes at the house or if they're at that corner piece.
Okay.
And they also were talking about speed through there. We've had, right, many complaints about uh, almost getting hit. So I would think if you could look at the vegetation, that might would help that.
Yes, sir. Yeah, if we can do some sight distance clearing in our right of way, we'll certainly make that happen.
Thank you.
Lee? I've just put in another plug. I've done this every couple of months, but as an example of y'all's website, mobile webpage works really well. Um, I put in a request for a pothole repair, and if you click it, the GPS locates exactly where you are within forty-eight hours. I've been putting the request in, not only that pothole, but several near it that I hadn't even requested had been repaired. I got updates throughout the process, just, it's a very nice process and I encourage all citizens to, to do that. It's, it's nice, and it's not just for potholes. It's anything like shrub repair, removal from road. It's a, anything you could want from V dot.
Yep. I can start including the phone number and website to that in my weekly, in my monthly report, but um, yeah, it is a-
That's a good point. I, I, I like it because it GPS locates to the website, but you're right, you can do it on the phone number. You don't have to be there at the time. Yeah, it goes in the same way.
Yeah, so I'll start sharing that as well, so everybody has access to that information.
Still getting a few complaints about Buckskin Creek?
Six forty. Yes, sir. Um, I spoke to the area headquarters this morning. They've done some patching and they have more smear patching scheduled for next week. And six forty is the first um, route that they're planning to address next week.
Okay. On the six-year rural rustic plan, the copy that I seen a while back, it was only two roads that qualified this year.
I, I can't remember off the top of my head.
West Bunker Hill. Can we expect that, the information on that, so we can make a decision in June? Is that, is that the plan?
So you've already added projects to the secondary six-year plan. You did it last year. Um, there's not really enough funding upcoming in fiscal twenty-four to fund a whole new project. Um, so there's no pressure to do it this year. You could do it next year. Um, and just pass a resolution, which just allows us to use the funding for fiscal twenty-four to fund the projects that you've already identified. Um, so I, I'll provide the draft language for that resolution, um, if you all could pass it.
Yeah, I just resent that to you and Brady. She, that's what she has in her email from March that says pretty much that. We just need, yeah, the resolution.
Okay. Everybody good? Thank you, Ms. Worley.
Thank you.
School board?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Harvey. The end of April, K twelve enrollment was fifteen sixty-eight, pre-K twelve enrollment was sixteen forty-three, and ADM was fifteen eighty. The last day of school is next Thursday, May twenty-fifth. The elementary school will celebrate with Super Kids Day on that date. Kindergarten promotion was Friday, May twelfth. Fifth grade promotion is Monday, May twenty-second at ten o'clock. And eighth grade promotion is Wednesday, May twenty-fourth at nine AM. This evening at six PM was our annual Senior Red Carpet Night. We are about to graduate another group of amazing Amelia students. Graduation will be held Saturday, May twentieth at ten AM in the high school gym. Tickets to graduation are distributed to students on the day prior to the event. If you have not yet RSV paid to the high school or Ms. Barrator, um, please do so so that we know you're coming and have appropriate seating. Mr. Trump will present the financial reports. He will also present an appropriation request and a resolution request. The first of which is for the additional state funds that A C P S will be receiving as a result of higher than budgeted ADM for the current school year. The second request is for carryover of F Y twenty-three unexpended funds to F Y twenty-four.
Good evening. Tonight I'm sha- sharing with you the April F Y twenty-three finance reports. At this point in the year, we would anticipate our revenues and expenditures to be at about seventy-six point five percent, and we are well below that with revenues and expenditures at sixty-two point five nine percent. Our actual adjusted expenditure figure is, is seventy point eight four percent, and this figure accounts for budget items that will not be expended in this fiscal year, such as remaining S R three funds that carry through until September of F Y twenty-five and state construction grant funding that we have uh, discussed several times. These figures also factor in backwards accruals of expenditures that lag behind in the fiscal year, including all ten-month employee pay as their contracts run from August through July. Additionally, some June summer school will be paid out in July and these expenditures will also be accrued back to F Y twenty-three. On the revenue side, reimbursements for federal budget lines are accrued back as reimbursements cannot be submitted until payments have been made. This means that federal revenue always lags behind federal expenditures. Other revenue sources that accrue back also rely on completed reporting from June, such as state payments for sales tax. To date, our textbook fund expenditures stand at thirty-one point six seven percent of the budgeted funds. These funds carry forward each year, so savings realized in this area are a great thing. Textbook adoptions are expensive and we have math and history textbook adoptions coming in the next few years. April F Y twenty-three shows a cafeteria net income of a hundred forty thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents and expenditures of a hundred twenty-six thousand six hundred and three dollars and two cents. Revenue and expenditure accrue back at the cafeteria as well, as claims for meals served are entered and invoices for services rendered or paid in the month following meal service. Currently, revenues less expenditures stand at forty thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and thirty-four cents on the year. While this figure seems low relative to the last few years, this is our first year where we are back at C E P claiming rates after higher rates for reimbursement were extended through pandemic relief efforts. Some more modest gains of this sort should be expected moving forward. I know this is a discussion we had early on in the school year when we were noticing our claims were, you know, our revenues were lower than they had been previously. Those are the reports. If you have, have any questions on those, I'm happy to answer them now. I can go into speaking on the appropriation resolution.
I have one question, but it doesn't pertain to what you just discussed. It was, the budget we approved was twenty-five million one hundred, one hundred thousand fifty-four, fifty, five forty-one. And then the school approved, the school board approved twenty-four eight ninety-three, three fifty-three. Why is there a difference?
I'll have to take a look at that exact difference in your documentation and match that up. I know with um, some of the adjustments going on and some of the changes we had to make, I bo- I believe I had that figure right, but actually, yes, yes, what we, there was a, sorry, there was a shift that we had, that we had to work through. Um, because of the reduced state funding, one, one change we did make was we changed from budgeting on the house budget, which we previously had done, um, because it was our hope that we'd have more action by the legislature, more resolution of the budget um, at this time, but with that lagging further and further, um, a concern we had was passing a budget that wasn't in, in line with the most recently approved budget, even if we had to go ahead and know we'd have to change it now and then change it again. So we changed to be budgeting on H B book, you know, fourteen hundred, which is the currently passed and approved skinny budget, which affects F Y twenty-three and F Y twenty-four. We know that they're still, they're still negotiating. Um, and one, but one of the factors that we had to consider was the house budget had, the house budget and senate budget from February had a seven percent salary increase as the baseline for the figure we'd have to meet to rec- to receive compensation supplement funding. Uh, with the reduction of the locality, that was something that was difficult, that we knew if the, if the legislature didn't come through with that additional increased funding, which was in the house budget to supplement that, we wouldn't be able to make seven percent um, on our own. So we had to go back to the house budget, so we had the space we needed to work with the five percent requirement that is there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was just hoping we'd leave two hundred and seven thousand dollars on the table.
No, no, it is, it is very much our hope that when it comes, you know, when things come back through um, later, I guess later in June, hopefully, I know we've all been hearing about the delays and revenue projections that are changing in the legislature as well, and then I'll have some comments on that. But that's, that's what we're working with. We're hoping that state funding will come back and will increase those figures close to what we had projected before.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. So on our ADM appropriation, um, with, and this is actually where I speak on that, I've had some notes on that already. With the V D O E funding calculation error, the passage of the stopgap skinny budget, continued budget negotiations in the legislature and national debt ceiling negotiation, which hamper Virginia's budget negotiations further, this budget season has not been an easy one for us. However, there are some silver linings. One benefit of the skinny budget and the legislature's early focus on supporting divisions that would have been facing significant shortfalls due to the calculation error is that the skinny budget gives us more clarity regarding additional state funding that A C P S is slated to receive for F Y twenty-three. Unlike last year's caboose budget did when we had additional funding added in the last few weeks of June. When using our final ADM of fifteen eighty, the recently released V D O E calculation template shows an increase of three hundred fifty-eight thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars in state revenues for the schools. We present to you tonight an appropriations request in this amount that requires no local match. This funding will be used to pay off the remainder of our bus leases, which, as was discussed in the presentation of the revised budget, is essential to our F Y twenty-four budget. The remaining funds would be used to fund other maintenance, transportation, technology needs.
I thought when we talked to him, but it was something in the contract that you couldn't pay the buses off early.
No, it, it's simply that we can't pay off, we can't, we can't pay them off partially. We couldn't make us a small payment on them. It's either we make continual, as it's a lease, you make continual payments on the date each year or you pay them off entirely.
Okay.
We have a pay, you know, we have our bus leave payoff set for June, because if these appropriations, if this appropriation is approved, we can move forward with it on that scheduled date and have these off of all of our plates.
I know you'd be happy to see that.
Yes. Do you want me to go on to the next piece or would you like to?
What's the board's pleasure on this one?
I'll make a motion. We approve.
Uh, appropriation.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. There's a motion on the floor to approve the three fifty-eight, nine forty-eight at state funds. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay.
Thank you. We also present for your approval a resolution for commitment by the Board of Supervisors to provide A C P S with carryforward funding from F Y twenty-three into F Y twenty-four. Resolutions such as this one encourage fiscal responsibility, ensuring for departments um, that funds not spent down at the end of the year, uh, at the end of a fiscal year are not lost for department use. Also, such commitments make larger capital expenditures, such as the school bus that was cut from the F Y twenty-three budget, um, a possibility when funds may be tight in the coming fiscal year. With the significant reduction of the county's contribution to the public schools' budget in F Y twenty-four, the action of this resolution would allow A C P S to plan proactively to maintain and improve our buildings, replace or, replace or repair aging vehicles, and continue to improve instructional, the instructional settings and technology for our students. Such resolution was actually encouraged by Mr. Harvey um, during budget discussions with county and school board chairs, county and, uh, county and schools administrators and county school finance staff on April eleventh, when we met to discuss some of the budget challenges the county and schools are facing.
Okay. Any idea what the amount's gonna be?
With this being my first year working through a full fiscal year, um, that's something I'm still working on dialing in. Some of it will also have to do with the ADM appropriation. I would like to think it's being in the area of about five hundred thousand dollars possibly. But that's something I'm still dialing in.
Regardless of the ma- regardless of the amount, it's no extra, there's no extra cost to the county. It's capped at the amount we already budgeted spending for the schools.
Correct. This would simply be taking savings from this year and allowing us to start making plans. I think one of the challenges we had this year with the um, with our audit coming back so late and having some questions about whether we would get carryover and we requested part of it. We didn't get all of it. We actually, we didn't come back with an additional request for the remainder. We understand that. We discussed that in budget discussions. But one of the issues we have with some of those larger expenditures, we know the more money that goes into it, quite often, the more time it takes to get done. Um, lead times, especially on buses, especially for ones that are good fiscal choices for us. As funding came available, as we had these other pieces, we looked into, could we get another bus with some of this extra ADM funding? And there's no time to get either a gas or diesel bus. Earlier in the year, we could have gotten diesel, but we know how much more expensive that is for us to run. So if we're going to make good fiscal decisions, even if we know this carryover won't come, as the resolution states, until after the audit findings are, are approved, knowing that that's, is approved, lets us put the pieces in place to know that we can make that purchase and plan well in advance. Um, and hopefully make some of those sound fiscal decisions. Because we know if procurement takes time, you can find better deals if you start shopping early and you can put things in place. And also, it just helps us understand and make, you know, plan proactively to say at the end of this year, is there something we could do this year that we could do next year instead? Is there something we could do to make sure, um, with, with the reduction in our general operating budget, every piece of savings we can be encouraged to keep and we can be encouraged to make so we can put it forward towards other things, is a great thing. It's a responsible fiscal decision to make, um, but that's hard to do without that type of assurance.
I like, I like to bet on fiscal responsible of knowing a figure. Your records show you, you got like ten million left in your budget already. Quite substantial from local funds. I'm not saying no, but I, I wouldn't be in favor of just signing not knowing what it's gonna be.
One thing I can speak to on that, on that report is that that local figure is a little, it's a little bit wonky. I've been looking at recently. One thing that's difficult is we talk about the carry forward of the state construction funds. Those state construction funds, as they are appropriated and set in motion, the budget that was approved before I came aboard was, are actually in fund one. They're in the general operating funds. Which means they are currently offsetting some of what that county transfer needs to be. We've received of, I have to double check the exact figure on that fund, but it's coming near the end of the fiscal year. We received most of that one point four million dollars. So that county transfer figure is actually going to increase by the state construction amount because that amount is moving forward. So trust me, I understand what that looks like. I mean, that's something that I've been thinking about as we've gone through this budget cycle, a change we probably need to make. And just either how this reported or just how it's reported, unless since I'll be more than happy to speak with Mr. Worrell, the treasurer on. As well about how we need to accomplish that to make sure this is more clear for everyone.
David, help me understand why the amount makes such a difference, whether it's a dollar or a million dollars, ten thousand dollars, whatever it is. It's an amount that we already budgeted for them. Therefore, we've already, we know we have the funds to pay it. We've not expected to carry it forward into future years. We haven't allocated it into our next year's budget. So. If we let them have the same amount that's already budgeted, no matter what that amount is, what's the impact regardless of the amount? How does that change your thinking?
I think it. I think it shows responsibility on our part and to the citizens that, that we're not just writing a blank check. I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not saying no to it. I'm just saying.
It can lead.
I, I want to, I'd like to see a figure before I.
You're, yeah, I would say it's already an approved budget amount.
I need in our budget, I mean, Todd, if we mentioned any extra money that we find that we would, if we were in the black, we would give it to the school. So essentially, that's.
But the problem is though, it could lead into other departments. You're, you're agreeing on a blank check. I like things to be clean on everything. You have no idea what you're agreeing to. None.
You do, because we know the maximum amount that they can spend. We know.
How much will we go carry over then?
You'll carry, you'll end up carrying over nothing because they're going to let them have, have it all to spend.
No, no.
Okay.
You say we know what it is.
We know the total amount, we know the total amount they can spend. What is the amount for the twenty twenty-three budget?
Twenty-two and change.
And that's the total amount. But that's not a local fund, but that's not a local funds. You're, they're only, they're only, they're only talking about local funds. This isn't, this isn't that amount.
So gentlemen, if I may add. One of the things that the school division had to do to make next year's budget work. Is to cut everything out of the transportation line. We're going to pay off the bus leases, but there was also funds there that were intended to purchase a bus. But to make the budget work, we had to use those funds as well. And as Mr. Trump said, in the last three months of school year, you cannot purchase a bus. It takes a whole lot more lead time to do that. There are other situations that are similar. When we met with Mr. Phelps and Mr. Harvey and Mr. Worrell with our board chair. We were told. You will not see both the three hundred and sixty-one thousand F Y twenty-two carryover and. Whatever the F Y twenty-three carryover happens to be, it would be one or the other. And we were encouraged to come before the board. To request this. And so that's what we're doing today in good faith by what was shared with us during that administrative meeting. So we have shown good fiscal integrity. We have always provided the board of supervisors with a list of the things that were purchased with any funds. That were carried from one year to another. And this is not an additional budget request. This is a request for us to continue to be able to use funds from the current year. Into next year where our budget has been cut so hugely.
Did you not suggest that to them?
We talked about it. I thought the three sixty-one was gonna be the carryover. And we had a number.
That three sixty-one was clearly left after we had been through the audit process. We had been through the full audit process. We had had the other appropriation for the additional state funds from last summer. So that three sixty-one was set months behind.
F Y twenty-two.
That F Y twenty-two carrier. So that was a very different figure we were speaking of.
And we were told that that figure, that money from F Y twenty-two. That would have been carryover had been used as part of what balanced the budget. That you all just passed for F Y twenty-four. So we did not come back and request that money. Instead, we're coming to you today in good faith. To request this year's carryover for next year's budget that has been cut.
It's almost like we don't want the schools to spend the money we approved last year.
Well, that's the thing. That's why I don't understand the fiscal, if we're not fiscally responsible in letting them spend the money we already budgeted. Then it's our fault for approving the budget in the first place. And that's what we're, that's what we'd be saying is we approved a faulty budget in, right now.
I don't see it that way. I'm, I like said, I'm not saying, I'm not gonna say no to it, but I gotta have a figure. I mean, either we wait to the audit to see what a figure is, but I mean, that's just.
Are you planning on taking some of it back from them based on the figure?
I don't know.
Money that, that you said they could spend. Now you want to take it back after the conditions.
I'm not saying I'm gonna take it back. I'm not gonna say I cut it, but I'm not in favor of passing something that doesn't have a figure to it.
I mean, I had a problem last year with the budget because we were signing a blank check is the way I looked at it because of the state. Remember, the state didn't do their budgets, so we didn't know what we would do, what you needed, what you had coming in. And I swore then I'm not gonna sign another blank check.
But we still only approved the money the county pays.
Like what other department gets the carryover? This is just, I'm being devil's advocate. What other department gets their carryover every year?
They can ask for it.
Well, but who does? I'm just using devil's advocate now, so don't get fired up.
What other department got cut by that amount this year?
What other department gets that much?
Well, they don't get it every year, first of all.
You gotta go by percentage. You can't go by big figures, Todd. I mean, it doesn't work like that.
I think the sheriff's department lost the most percentage. On budget.
They asked for the best percentage.
They lost the most. They lost the most. They had the biggest percentage cut out of anybody's budget was the sheriff's department.
Out of your request. So nothing prevents, nothing prevents any department from coming in and asking for carryover. You have a good point. It appears no one else needs it. Which is a great point as we go into budgets in the future. Maybe, you know, I said it at last month's meetings, maybe we need, I think we need to be looking. But department by department at their budgets, because if they're not spending all of it and they're not requesting carry it forward. There's some legitimate questions that need to be asked.
Okay, then everybody should be under the same scrutiny then.
If I may add one more thing as well. One piece about this with this carryover was also critical this year. Is because of discussions about the A N T C building and the state and some of the recommendations. That came from the supervisor as well about how we should, you know, consider what goes into our C I P plan for this year. While this year we've had several capital improvement items for the schools approved functioning, making repairs. Places that also I know that Mr. Lynch has worked diligently to find our sources to save the county funds so we can continue to roll that into other projects as well. With pushing of A N T C to the front, because we know of how much of a heavy lift that's going to be for the county. We also don't have any other capital improvement projects approved for F Y twenty-four.
And the information that we provided you just a few short months ago showed how we saved, I believe it was over seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. In capital improvement funds on projects for this year.
Yeah, but see now this is just me. I don't. When you project a project to be fifty thousand, when it really is gonna be thirty thousand, that's not a safe, that's just the way I see it. That's why I think we will change some of this C I P funding in the future.
I understand what you're saying.
Some proposals or some estimates so we can actually see what the costs are.
We are coming to you at your suggestion.
I think you've continued to learn the lesson. You can't trust this board. It is a painful lesson and I'm sorry, the students, the teachers and administrators bear the brunt of that lesson.
I don't think it's a lesson. I think, nobody said no. I just want to have a figure.
You met, when you met with them, you told them. To come and either ask for the carryover from twenty twenty-two or from twenty twenty-three. They did, and now you've made a fool of them by, by saying you're not going to approve it when you knew there was no possible way in May. They would know what amount they would have at the end of June.
They've already, you put the three sixty-one to it.
That was F Y twenty.
That was F Y twenty-two funds that have been applied to our budget to keep us, to keep you from having to go negative in your.
They did. This board voted against that, given them to last year. They didn't get the carryover from twenty-two.
But they just got it, didn't they?
We got, we got a little less.
We got the state. We got the additional state funding.
Right, they got the additional state. Now, this vote, we got the email, we got the email from Dr. Sarah Tanner Anderson sent all of us the email recapping the twenty twenty-two carryover. Within the past couple of weeks that this board did not provide them.
Okay. Did you make a motion, Mr. White?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, motion on the floor. To approve the resolution. Any more discussion? I'm still gonna stand behind. I'd like to see a figure. All in favor of the resolution, raise your hand. All opposed? Did anybody vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No?
Yeah, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the landfill advisory board committee appointments. Gentlemen, this, this has got out of hand. There was an ad placed in the paper by request of the landfill advisory committee. Seeking. Interest. And we had a lot of interest. So I think we've got to make a decision. The citizens have done what they were told to do in the paper and. We need, we need to decide. I'm going, my reappointment is Mr. Paul Puckett. He served, I don't think he served a full term. This will be his first. I think Mr. Jones got on here. He's gonna reappoint Mr. Don Garrett. And then Shaw's district has Ms. Cruz and Mr. Train, Mr. Train Easter. And Mr. Robinson's district has Mr. Trainham and Mr. Anderson. So I will make a motion to appoint, reappoint Mr. Paul Puckett. To the landfill. Motion on the floor? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Second one is Mr. Train Easter or Ms. Allison Cruz? Would somebody like to make a motion either way?
Can you have discussion for, can we discuss before anything or not?
Why don't you discuss half a motion? Go ahead.
But I usually discuss topics.
Okay, go ahead. Just discuss it.
Well, because this bio for one of them was only provided to us within the last forty-eight hours. It did not provide the required time that the board agreed upon to be able to review and have a discussion with the members. So. I don't feel we can appropriately evaluate that. Doesn't mean you won't continue. We only got, we only got his within the last forty-eight.
Yeah, I just, I just talked to him two days ago, actually myself, so I didn't have time to.
Right.
Get out anything for anybody as well, but.
These folks have done what they asked. I'd like to see us move forward, move on through this, and then after we get through this, we're gonna talk about this process. And, but we can't change the process when we've got citizens that show the interest.
Just to be clear, the process has changed this particular cycle.
It got changed by the, the ad put in the paper from the L A, L A C.
That's not the part that changed or is the concern, but anybody can advertise, that's fine. The change in the process was the board had agreed, we would share bios. Two weeks in advance with, and we would share them amongst ourselves. That was not done. One of them was shared, provided no contact information, so made it impossible for us to even reach out. So I just, you can do whatever you want. It just needs to be really clear. The process was already changed. That happens all the time. It was done.
What's the board's pleasure?
You don't have a motion.
Well, I'm just asking what the board's pleasure is. What y'all wanna do?
Well, I'll make a motion that we nominate him because he's running on the post. Because Ms. Cruz just said she did not want to.
That's a totally different position. That's her.
That was a P, nope. P muscle.
Excuse me, my mistake. I'm human.
You have one that's, you have one that's unopposed though for the, for don't, didn't, didn't Mr. Garrett, there's a reappointment?
I'm not gonna say nothing. Every time I say something, I get corrected, so.
Well, that one's, well, I mean, there's no bios or anything required for reappointment, so that'd be fine.
What's the difference on, he's unopposed also. Yeah, plus William, nobody else is wanting the job. What's the difference? I mean, we're gonna wait to the next meeting and still put him in there because nobody else wants it? Get it over with.
Well, that's a reappointment. We never had to share bios on reappointments and the other one does have two people for the other two districts.
Look, they got stuff to say about everything we do. You remember this board is the embarrassment to you. You hate this board. You done got under my skin.
Hey, folks, calm down.
I just, I think one thing's done above board and fair. That's all I'm saying.
All right, well, for District Three, we do have two. I'll clear it up. So we have Allison Cruz and we have William Easter, Train Easter. I have talked to both of them. I did not get any information on Mr. Easter. Like I said, I just talked to him and I believe he had sent it to Taylor through the county. So, but. I know we did receive it yesterday, I believe. My recommendation is Ms. Cruz. I've talked to them both and. There is no doubt that nobody knows the landfill like she does. I, I, nobody can argue that. So I think, I think she would be an excellent candidate and landfill is definitely not gonna sneak by with anything. As they don't now, so. That's my recommendation.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion.
Motion on the floor. For Ms. Cruz on the landfill committee. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Mr. Robinson, what do you want to do on yours?
Well, I have been talking to Bubba Trainham for a month or better.
And gave him a deadline and he took that and some to finally give me an answer. And you talk about somebody knowing the trash business, who knows your trash business better than Bubba Trainham? And that's who I'd like to nominate.
Okay. Mr. Trainham, is there a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion on the floor to approve Mr. Trainham as the LAC representative from Mr. Robinson's district. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Mr. Jones, you have Mr. Garrett as a reappointment.
If it's the board's pleasure, let's put him back.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay. Motion on floor to reappoint Mr. Garrett to the landfill advisory committee. Any discussion? All in favor? Right.
All right, well, for continuity of the board, then I'll make a motion to nominate Train Easter.
Thank you, Mr. White. Motion on floor to nominate Mr. Easter. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. I want to we're going to set this process here now. Mr. Easter has said one, a week ahead, he just said two weeks ahead. All we go continue to do to bios, are we going to take the supervisor at his at his appointment?
We just voted against the recommendation of the supervisor, so I guess I said it.
This is a, we had, we normally don't have two people running for any of these offices. I'm finding the way it used to be, that the supervisor knows his district, picks his person, comes here. I didn't need a bio. I trusted the supervisor. But then we went into the bios, we've got to be two weeks ahead, got to have this, got to have that. Let's, let's set it right now. What are we going to require in the future for a committee appointment?
I think it's good to be thorough and do your due diligence, there's no doubt, but I think the other problem with this one, and, and I didn't understand it myself, is why the urgency, like this process should probably, now, now, LAC is a little different because they need quarterly. But typically, this is something we should probably do three months in advance as well as, and then I, I talked to Mr. Easter about it. I mean, he didn't know about it till the last minute, and in all fairness to him, tonight would have been a great night to announce to the community that we had these nominations, and we haven't been able to do that to some of them. But this one was, seemed a little rushed so that we could get them in there and they could be there for the June meeting. I, I get all that, but yeah, I think just making sure any of the other one, any of the other appointments that are going to be, have this issue that we need to start farther back. And make sure that we had that announcement, public announcement period so that we could get the information out, you know, just so everybody has a chance.
How are we going to announce it? Well, just had the ad in the paper evidently didn't work.
I mean, just, just at the meet, you know, a lot of times when we do our committee thing, we'll say it's, you know, we've got an appointment coming up.
Okay.
Which I'll take part of the blame. I'm on this committee and I, I just, I didn't realize it and then, you know, after our last meeting and it's kind of too late at that point.
Well, we have six coming up in December. We have the electoral board.
We don't get to choose those. That's judge appointed.
Okay, so we'll scratch out.
Make recommendations.
We make recommendations to the judge.
Electoral board?
No. The parties make the recommendations. We have no role in the electoral board.
Correct. We have Mr. Harrison, Lee Harrison. He comes up in August to the ASAP board. Probably something strange that it has to be the Commonwealth attorney maybe, but and then planning commission has two. Social services has one, and the board of zoning appeals has two. One, I think, was done last year, but I'm not sure. I got to look into that, so. Those are the ones coming up. How far in advance do we want to advocate? Talk about them? Whatever we got to do. Three months ahead?
September, October, I think it would be fine. And I, I guess, Taylor, you can usually check, your office checks to see if people would like, wish to be reappointed. So if we could confirm that list too, that, you know, that's a step ahead.
Okay. Are we going to require a bio?
I like it. I mean, I think if somebody if somebody truly desires to be on these committees, a few minutes of their time to write up a little about me and why, why I want to be, you know, we're, we're very fortunate that we know these people, but, but if somebody new out of town would like to get involved in the community, we're not going to know them. You know, so it would be nice to have a little information.
Okay. Does that consist of everybody?
What you just required, come in and speak to them, meeting before.
Some people don't like talking in public.
Right.
Is, is a hit and miss thing. It depends on the person. I mean, I had to pull teeth to get what I got.
My idea about that was that it gave the opportunity for the supervisor to contact them and speak to them. The problem was the one you just approved, and I like him, but I don't know how to get in touch with him, so I couldn't actually speak to him. In addition to the fact.
It's in the book. It's on every dumpster or trash can in Amelia County.
Well, we only have forty-eight, only forty-eight hours too. That was the other issue. But in general, I'm saying, I'm trying to explain what we're trying to get at. It's not that you read that and do nothing. You read it and then we take action to get in touch with them. If you choose to. If you don't want to, you don't do anything.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, three months ahead of the when the term expires, he bioed. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think it ought to be and/or. Either way, it depends on the person.
Okay. If you get a bio.
I mean, he didn't even write the bio. His wife wrote it. You know, he doesn't like things like that. There's certain people, I don't know. But I think you ought to know the person. If you've got a question about Bubba Trainham or anything like that, ask me. I'll answer any question that I can answer for you.
All right. Three months, we'll advertise, one month ahead of the deadline, you get your bio, it gives you a month before we vote. Is that cool with everybody? If you don't want to buy, we don't get a buy.
Yeah, we can take that into consideration.
Okay. All right.
And then we just, I guess we just note the recommendation of the supervisor involved doesn't matter for that district. It's just open.
It should, it should. I'm not really concerned about a bio. I think it's.
I didn't, I didn't mention bio, so.
Well, that's not the first time that's happened.
I said recommendation.
That's not the first time that's happened.
I know, I'm asking him to doc, I'm asking him a question about the, how he wants to document the process.
I trust the supervisor.
But you just voted against the supervisor.
That was, that was what, that was my reasoning.
Right, I just, let's just not say on record, we trust the supervisor when we vote against them.
I had issues with that person.
No, that's fine. You can, just don't say you trust Shawn's recommendation. If you don't, you don't have to say you trust.
Well, I suggest you probably only come with one. Most of will have one.
You would have if they hadn't been put in the book against his wishes.
Okay, well, we're going to go with the bio.
So you're going to publish them in the book or not?
I think they ought to be.
And so if there are more than one, then you will have more than one?
No, that should be up to the supervisor then, as you said, if you only want one.
Okay. Is that what y'all want to do?
I don't know. I feel like we're overthinking this little process myself. I think it's ridiculous.
No, we typically have always just tried to bring one person to the table so as not to get hurt feelings.
That's right.
I agree. This time went off the rails.
Two positions. This just usually doesn't happen like that.
They get blowed up. Usually the supervisor makes the decision of who he wants to present to the position.
Okay, let's go with that.
No, no in the book or in the book? I'll say no in the book.
All right, no in the book.
I agree. It was never intended to be in the book. It was never intended to be in the book.
All right, let's move on. Board supervisor activities and reports. Mr. Robinson?
Man, I don't know what I've done down after this. Let's see. I had a PSR meeting last night. We got a lot of funds that are available to the Amelia elderly, and our percentages are dropping back, so we need to start looking in that direction if I need assistance. Food, transportation, AC units, electric bills. There's a whole bunch of stuff, so look into the PSR if you need some help. Of course, I was at Amelia Day. I think that's all I can tell you right now. I got a CPM team meeting tomorrow morning. That's it.
All right, Mr. Easter?
Most of my time over the last month was spent with Amelia Day and definitely a big success thanks to all that were able to come out. This was the first year that I can remember in recent years, we invited every local elected official, not just the board of supervisors, and we had a great turnout. Vendors were really happy. We've already had a third of all of our spaces for next year sold. So that tells you right there how happy the vendors were, which means attendance was good, which means that two people were buying, which means they were happy. So that's, that's what we look for.
Mr. Jones?
I have a CRC meeting this morning and they announced that the, they're assisting Amelia Emergency Squad through Central Health Grant for funds to purchase a AED device for one ambulance. And that the application's already, according to this, been sent in. And next week, I'm having a meeting at the Keyesville Industrial Park. And they are asking for farmers, supervisors, county administrators and all to attend the meeting about the Tyson buyout, and they're having some people there from Richmond to talk about it and that they, like I said, they want farmers there too.
When is that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, twenty-third at nine thirty. Yeah.
Mr. Wyatt?
In Keyesville, right there where the cat is. On Street sixty, turn there, and it's an office building right on the right there.
Yeah, yep, the only, the only one.
Yes, only one.
That's where some of my meetings are. Oh, last month I had a Clio meeting by Virginia Heartland that beats there at the park. I did not have a forum, so we did not meet. Radio system meeting, the Motorola update, everything's still looking good and on, on schedule. Got a few updates that we'll probably be talking about next month regarding towers. Sure, I talked to Brady earlier today. I think that's in the process. But everything, timeline's still looking good. Hopefully next month in June, we'll have the detailed data review done. Put it on paper where Motorola can basically go for it and move forward with that. Just the usual other meetings. I missed my library meeting due to a softball game conflict. Talked to Ms. Harris today. Nothing new or major going on. They did hire a librarian, so I think they're back up and running smoothly, which is good, good, good news, so. That's, that's about all I've got done so far.
All right. I did some of the same radio meetings, had a couple of meetings with the Piedmont Regional Jail about the events that happened up there. That's about it. All right, moving on. Mr. World, this is your section for your budget that you need to do.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are submitting a revised budget, or FY twenty-four budget resolution. There was a typo on items one I and one J, I believe. Give me just one second. I want to pull that up real quick. Yes, sir. One I and one J. The tax year is, should be twenty twenty-three. The original resolution that was adopted read twenty twenty-two, but the original, the tax year should be twenty twenty-three. So we're just cleaning that up a little bit, offering clarification. I think it was pretty evident during the budget discussions that that was the intent of the board, but the resolution just didn't reflect that unfortunately. So changing those two dates on I and J. We also are recommending a change to item one J as well to read, the commissioner of revenue shall apply a fifteen percent reduction to the tax liability for automobiles in the twenty twenty-three tax year. We think that that just, it's a little more clear on the intent of the board, on what the intention was with the reduction. I think that the intent ultimately was the rate shall be four dollars and fifteen cents per one hundred dollar valuation. And that a fifteen percent reduction be applied to the tax liability of the citizen, so that just cleans that up a little bit. And we did reach out and did some research on the applicable tax code for this. And the tax code does give a couple of different ways that we can do this. The rate is kind of, it's set at this point unless y'all decide to go back and change that, so that takes out one way that you, you guys could do it. The second way that we can do that is a rate of assessment change in this classification. Looking at the code and some of the other counties around this kind of did it a couple of different ways. Some counties did reduce their rate by whatever percentage that they decided to offer relief at. Others did a lower tier of assessment. I think some of them went from trade-in value to loan value. That was a reduction in the assessment. Some of them did a combination. They reduced their loan assessment, or I'm sorry, their assessment tier. And then also did a different ratio on the assessment. So instead of doing a hundred percent ratio, they did, let's say ninety percent or eighty-five percent or eighty percent. So with the verbiage change, it kind of gives more flexibility on how to achieve that reduction in tax liability for citizens. Like I said, with the rate being adopted the way that it was, it kind of takes that piece out, but there's a couple of other ways that we could do that, so.
Okay. Mr. Gold, do you have any insight on this?
I mean, I agree with what's been said. I mean, the, the rate's been adopted. And what this does is apply a fifteen percent discount to the adopted rate for automobiles, not all classes of personal property, you know, and that's what the original resolution did too. So it just clarifies that so that that happens at the commissioner's office, not at the treasurer's office. Well, I, I don't think there's any legal issue here, so if it's an administrative one, that's.
What was the language last year, last year used? Because we did a reduction last year, a higher rate, but I mean, a higher percentage. What was the language used last year?
It was a rate change. Rate change. Remember it all got messed up and it became a rate change.
Well, you're right. You mentioned automobiles, so my insurance pointed out that, right, this says all automobiles. But did we actually intend it to be all automobiles, including the ones that are already reduced? Like fire, rescue and handicap? Or do we only mean it to be the regular, regularly taxed? What did you factor it on?
Yeah, the, the budget was fatted on several classifications to be classified under this code, so automobiles and motor vehicles. So it does include multiple classifications and it was fatted into the budget that way with the fifteen percent reduction applied to certain ones. No, not everything, no, just certain classifications that fall under the state code. I have to go back and look at that, what those classifications are, because I don't have that in front of me.
But if it's certain classifications and this doesn't specify about those certain classifications, how will that work?
Well, I think the, the intent of the board was automobiles, which automobiles kind of falls, certain classifications all fall under automobiles and that was.
That's what I asked. So you mean everything, all? That just seems excessive, so you already have all the things that are being reduced so much below. so much below anyway. Okay, but. Did you give away mine? I think the easiest option to clear it up is to lower the assessed value. If it, that's, that's going to take some funny math, but a twenty-five percent assessed value reduction would probably be close to a ten or fifteen percent reduction on the actual tax paid. So, and I mean, I may be off on that, but I mean, you're going to have to do a higher assessment reduction to get that fifteen percent that you want.
Can I speak on that?
Sure.
Um, so the assessed value can only be done in concurrence with the Commissioner of Revenue. So the Commissioner and the board have to agree to reduce the assessed value. I am not supporting reducing the assessed value because when we do that in the system, it changes everything in the history. So an assessment right now that would show a hundred percent, if I need to check things in the history for abatements or supplements years later, that assessment's not going to show the hundred percent. It's going to be the reduced value. So it's not going to keep a flow of how we can go back and look at things. The best way to do this would be to alter the tax rate so that we can pluck that into the system. Because the Commissioner assesses. I don't touch tax liability. So the way it's written that I'm going to adjust the tax liability, the tax liability is after my bar.
I don't think so, Mr. Share. I mean, uh, other plant counties have, have applied a discount and that is done in the Commissioner's office. So there's no, there's no legal problem here. So I beg to differ with the Commissioner. And I think if she talked, you know, maybe to the State Tax Department.
State Tax Department. He highlighted in an email that he sent back to Josh that it should be done by either lowering the assessment or fixing the rate.
So other counties have done it this way?
I have an Excel spreadsheet of all of the counties and no county has done it like this.
Well, I believe staff gathered examples of other counties that had done it by applying a discount.
That's correct.
So, yeah, it can be done. So I don't think it's a legal issue. I think it's a issue, an administrative one. That's not to say you can't change what you've done here, but I'm saying, you know, legally it can be done this way.
What do you suggest, Josh?
Well, you know, like, like I said, the, the code is, there's two different ways to do this. There are implications, obviously, if you decide to do the rate change. We'll have to reevaluate, um, make sure that the classifications that are included in that budget assessment, or I'm sorry, the, the budget itself, the budget revenue of that can have that, a, a, a separate rate attached because we would have to tax those classifications at a different rate than the general personal property tax. So you had to have additional advertisements, additional public hearings, had to make sure the budget lines up with what has been adopted in the current resolution. So, you know, it's just, there's implications either way that y'all guys decide to do it.
All right, what's the board's pleasure? I'm in favor of leaving the rate the same, adjusting the uh, value of the vehicle.
It's not adjusting the value, it's reducing the tax liability.
Yes.
That's what the language does.
Do we have to change the language to make it work that way?
So why can't, why do you not talk to the Commissioner of Revenue? Like in the month preceding before this? Why do y'all not talk to each other and just try to work something out?
I mean, it was advertised multiple times. It was all open sessions. It was all public workshops.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, why do, but it's like, how does that, how is that an example of a functioning office? That you wait until you get to public session to talk to another member of county administration?
Ms. Walsh and I did discuss the classifications that will be falling under automobiles and motor vehicles. That's what the budget is based off of. We talked about the rate and what it was going to be assessed at, or taxed at.
Right, and we discussed that it, that what had been calculated was three fifty-three. So it was my understanding until I saw in print that y'all were adopting three fifty-three per vehicles that would be affected, the regular priced vehicle and four fifteen for everything else.
I expressed that the advertised rate was four dollars and fifteen cents. To make the calculation work in the Excel spreadsheet, three dollars and fifty-three cents was used because that would be four dollars and fifteen cents less fifteen percent.
So that would be great to just adopt the three fifty-three. And everything can just roll along smooth, right? Because already told us to adjust the tax liability, they're going to have to build a program that we're going to have to pay for. So why would we pay for something?
That ain't, that's not the way, that's not the way it was explained to us.
Now, I believe there's a second option as well. That wouldn't cost, cost us anything.
I make a motion that we accept the resolution. The rate stays at four fifteen and we do a tax liability decrease of fifteen percent. Motion on the floor, any more discussion?
Vehicles only.
Vehicles only. And I will amend it that fire and rescue volunteers still get their fifty percent cut after this calculation.
Yes.
All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? All right, motion carries. Here's on to the special events. Do you have a special event for Amelia Truck Pool?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Will Jones has submitted a special event application for the Amelia Truck Pool. It's to be held on June seventeenth and August twelfth from three PM to twelve AM at Tom Scott Park. Uh, he's projecting a anticipated of fifteen hundred attendees. Um, it has been reviewed and signed off on by all the, uh, relevant parties, including the Sheriff's, uh, Department. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Anybody got any questions?
Everything signed off on, Sheriff, all that?
Yes, the sheriff did sign off on it, um, and he met with him at the day that he pulled the application.
It's just one pool or?
It's two pools.
Two pools.
June seventeenth and August twelfth.
Okay.
All right, what's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Easter. Motion to approve the special event permit for the truck pool for the two dates mentioned. All, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thanks to a next one for the Amelia Presbyterian Church Auto Show.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Nathaniel Pate um, applied for a special event permit for the Amelia Presbyterian Church Auto Show to be held on Dunn Street, particularly running from the church down to Virginia Street. Um, so blocking off that area won't really interfere with traffic, um, as there's other routes around. It'll be held November fourth, uh, at nine, from nine AM to two PM. So he is, you know, just their application is pretty early. It's just pushing that, you know, six month on the early side, but, uh, it's good to get it in early. It's been approved by everyone. They'll, they will have two food trucks on site as well. And a anticipated number of a hundred attendee, uh, attendees.
Okay. Everything's been signed as well?
Yes, yes, sir.
What's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion, we pass, approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Motion on the floor to approve the Amelia Presbyterian Church Auto Show. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Public hand on the rezoning request for the Amelia County EDA.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm gonna, uh, go through a little bit of a summary of information. I also have a presentation just to give you guys some visual aids, uh, to help you better understand the property uh, that is the subject of the rezoning request tonight. Um, the applicant is the Amelia County Economic Development Authority. They're requesting a rezoning, uh, from Rural Residential three, RR three to, uh, M one Industrial District, which is our light industrial district. It's for property located at, uh, just making sure this works, sorry. It's for property located, uh, on the north side of US three sixty. It's adjacent to Richardson Road. It's, if you're at three sixty, facing Richardson Road, it's to the left. Uh, and it runs along, uh, US three sixty, um, as was mentioned, the old Emerson's, uh, area there. The antique shop and stuff is right sort of in the center of this property. Uh, there are two additional parcels that are included in this request. They're owned by JGL LLC. Um, who, which is a affiliate of Swift Creek Forest Products that owns the parcel um, on the, uh, western side of the two that are being included in this, uh, request. So there's three parcels total. It's tax map forty dash sixty-two A, forty dash fifty-three B and forty dash sixty-four. Sixty-two A was merged with a portion of forty dash sixty-three. Um, the request of rezoning, of course, uh, would impact the intensive use and development by right permitted on the subject parcels going from the RR three to the M one. The property is located in the rural preservation area. As you guys know, the future land use map. There's, um, certain areas. There's the village development area. There's a rural residential area. There's a rural, uh, rural, uh, rural residential development area. There's a rural preservation area. And those sort of span out from the courthouse in terms of sort of circles. However, our comprehensive plan also does layer in some economic development areas. One of those being the three sixty corridor along the corridor being economic development area. So in a, it's in a layered, the comprehensive plan has layers to it. And so at one layer, it's in rural preservation, but being a property that abuts three sixty, it's also in a corridor economic development area as well. Uh, the commerce park, uh, that, uh, would be, uh, the applicant wishes to develop the property to construct a commerce park. Uh, their intention is to construct one similar to the property off Old River Drive behind the Food Line Shopping Center. Um, it, the commerce park would be limited to tax parcel forty dash sixty-two A and the former portion forty dash sixty-three, which I previously stated has been merged into one. None of the EDAs, uh, proposed development would occur on the additional twenty-seven acres that is owned by Swift Creek Forest Products. Uh, the parcels that are owned by Swift Creek, because Swift Creek Forest Products, uh, parcel is zoned M two, were really serving as a buffer to that larger parcel that the EDA now owns. And so that's why they have, they requested to include that in this request. They had kept those parcels as a residential zoning and had not requested industrial as a buffer to shield them from the residential area. But if this parcel is rezoned to, uh, M one, they, uh, wanted to include that in the request, giving them further, uh, access to that property that they own. It isn't, the request is M one and not M two, so it is the light industrial version versus the heavy industrial version. Uh, that's, uh, in our zoning ordinance.
So just to be clear, Swift Creek is already zoned M two, the heavy industrial.
Yes.
So this would have but heavy industrial, all right? Because I think that's two good points you're making is Swift, the three sixty corridor has always been, or very, let me say not always, a very long time has been designated, as you're saying, for development for the county. That is the, our focus development area. And this is abutting a heavy industrial area.
Yes, and the landfill is across the other side of three sixty, which is the largest industrial zone property in the county.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, uh, conceptual site plan, which I'll show first, I want to show you guys, here's a survey. It's just hard to click and talk at the same time. So here's a survey of the property. Gives you a good idea of its location being between Richardson Road, um, and US three sixty. And then on the west side, you see the property is owned by JGL LLC. I'm going to show you another map here. This, uh, red outline shows you all of the subject property, uh, that would be, uh, that is a part of this rezoning request. You'll see two parcels there that are abutting three sixty on that north side, uh, that are not included in the red outlined area. Those are two houses. One of those houses is actually zoned B one business. Uh, I'm assuming, it appears to be operated as a residence. So I'm assuming at some point in the past, when the zoning map was defined, it was probably operating as a business and has since been, uh, turned into a residence. The other, that property that I just referenced is, is owned by Swift Creek Forest Products, that residential property that's zoned B one. So they own that property. It's a rental house. Um, the property next to it is owned by Shamika Harris. Um, I've driven by that way several times, uh, uh, dozens of times, one just for the property, but also as my family owns property past that direction. And I have never seen a car at that house. Um, I did speak to a local realtor that believed the individual living there had passed away, so I'm not sure what's going on there. They were notified and I have not received any, uh, feedback from them regarding this request. That is a res, a residentially zoned piece of property. Um, that's the, if you're looking at those two parcels, the one that I was just speaking of is the right parcel, the eastern parcel that, uh, is owned by Ms. Shamika Harris. This is the zoning map of Amelia County. As you see, Amelia County has a lot of purple, green and royal blue. The purple is rural preservation zoning district. The green is agricultural zoning district. The royal blue is rural residential zoning district and the sky blue is our heavy industrial, which is M two. There are very few light industrial properties. If you see the little bitty red dots on there, those are hard to see, but there's two, uh, in the landfill area. Those are light industrial. Uh, for a matter of correction, this has been corrected on our GIS. The blue area that borders the A five and RR three that you see, that's at Mount Zion and Harrison's Road, that was incorrectly labeled that way by the GIS administrator. We work with Hurt and Profits. That's actually RR three. Um, most of you guys are familiar with what these industrial properties are in Amelia's. Uh, on the right side in Manboro and, uh, Mr. Robinson's area is, uh, Vulcan, uh, Rock Quarry. You have Martin Marietta. If you go up to the northwest of that, you have Martin Marietta. Um, and then there's a few parcels sort of splintered down through there along three sixty corridor. And then as you see, the largest industrial zone property is the landfill, uh, down near, uh, where this property is located. This is a closer up image of, uh, three sixty, uh, and the property in particular, uh, the red outline um, is the area that's subject to the rezoning request. This is a flood map from the FEMA's National Flood Hazard Layer. It shows, uh, the various waterways that come through there. It does not show any flood zone on, in this property. However, there is, uh, some limits of study here that I believe, um, the next slide provides a little clarity on. This shows the creek coming through. This is the national wetlands inventory and it does show that in the north, uh, the northern side of this property, this subject parcel, you see that large green sort of, uh, string bean looking, um, section. That is a, uh, uh, freshwater forested shrub wetland. Um, that's located on the north side of the property. Of course, pending the board's decision on the rezoning request, any site development, any land disturbance would all have to go through the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality before anything could occur. And then this is the conceptual site plan. It shows, again, it's conceptual. The applications for rezonings, uh, we, uh, recommend it's, it's on the application. It's technically not a requirement, but we recommend a conceptual site plan included with our zoning applications to give an idea of what the applicant intends to do. This shows how the property could be developed. However, the applicant is going to have to work with VDOT, the Virginia Department of Health, the Department of Environmental Quality and our staff to ensure compliance with myriad layers, the zoning ordinance, there's the, the three sixty overlay district, the comprehensive plan, our stormwater, um, requirements. There's several layers that have to work with through the site plan process, which could affect this, this master plan of development. But this shows you roughly how the property could potentially be developed. The applicant has ten sites proposed. Um, it's about a million square feet of total buildings, um, and they would like to follow the general topography of the land. If you all have been by that piece of property, you know, there's some topography to it with some ravines and hill areas. With that being said, the last thing that I really have for you all, information wise, for your consideration before the public comment period is the comments from VDOT. VDOT, uh, estimates that about fourteen thousand vehicles per day travel on US Route three sixty. VDOT uses the eleventh edition of the ITE manual to determine the number of vehicle trips a potential development may, may, uh, bring with it. Based on the square footage is how they determine the vehicle trips, a certain number of vehicle trips per square footage. They're estimating a maximum of approximately four thousand vehicle trips per day. Um, if, when the, when the, if the, uh, plan was developed as was depicted in the conceptual site plan at its full development potential is the number of vehicle trips per day there, the maximum that they're predicting. A traffic impact statement is not required, uh, meaning a traffic study is not required by VDOT because it generates less than five thousand vehicle trips per day. So since it falls a thousand vehicle trips roughly under, a traffic state impact statement is recommended, particularly when working with VDOT, which I've had several conversations with, a focus on access point. Particularly when working with VDOT, which I've had several conversations with, a focus on access points and turn lane warrants because of the need for traffic to have ample time to get over into turn lanes and not impact throughway traffic. There will be a crossover impacted by this potential rezoning, and depending on their access points, maybe even the potential need for additional crossovers, if depending on what they do. This would all, of course, be to the applicant, be something the applicant would work through with VDOT and the conceptual site plan. Representing the applicant tonight is Mr. Neil Barber, he's a consultant for the Economic Development Authority. He can speak further to some of the Economic Development Authority's background, thought process, and what their forward thinking desire is. Also, Rebecca is here with VDOT to speak to any VDOT questions that you guys may have. And with that, I know that was a lot of information, I tried to just give you guys the clearest picture. I will say that when reviewing a rezoning from a zoning, as the certified zoning administrator, the number one thing that is to consider is the comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan has several layers to it, as you guys know. One of our main goals and objectives is to maintain the rural character and protect our rural and agricultural assets in our area. However, layered with that, another one of our major goals and objectives is to encourage future non-agricultural economic development and to designate sufficient land area of suitable size, terrain, access, and location for future economic development and growth. So here we have those layers in the comp plan that you guys would see with this property where it's a, currently it's a property that is undeveloped. About forty acres is used for prop land of the hundred and thirty-two as it stands. The other acreage is wooded land that would potentially be used for economic development purposes. I would say that, from my perspective, that the request is in line with the comp plan, being that it is on the three sixty corridor and it's almost abutting the largest piece of industrially zoned property in the county. With that being said, that's all I have for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Deal. Supervisors have any questions for Mr. Barber or the EDA? Hearing none, I open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this project, please come up, state your name and your address. Please keep it to three minutes, folks.
Good evening, gentlemen. EDA purchased this land with their own money, which is great. Oh, I'm sorry, Robert McGarvey, one nine seven five zero Dusty Hill Lane. I'm here to oppose this rezoning. EDA has purchased this land with their own money, that's great, that means the taxpayer isn't on hook for the loan. If you vote no on this, everyone walks away un wounded. EDA is still the owner of the property that they can resell, they can do anything with. We still live our own life. If you vote yes, there's going to be people injured, we are going to suffer severe financial losses, and our country lifestyle will be ruined. We have a comprehensive plan, it's good, we need to stick with it. We brought up several issues at the last meeting, and only one of them was addressed, that was traffic. We have huge concerns that there's no sewer treatment for an industrial complex. They're going to rely on septic tanks. Now, septic tanks can't handle industrial waste, it kills the good bacteria that process waste. That means all of this industrial waste is going to go through septic systems untreated. How long is that going to be before it gets into the groundwater and contaminates our wells? I'm shortening this way down to keep in your thing. We will lose huge amounts of money. Every home up there for the last twenty years is sold with a title, a beautiful country home in wooded pastoral settings. That's what we purchased, that's what everybody's purchased. Now, when we have to sell our homes, when we get too old to manage a property like this by ourselves, it's going to be listed as a house next to an industrial complex. As has been stated, this is a rural residential zone. We have an opportunity tonight for the board to show integrity, that they say what they mean and they mean what they say. We bought this land because the zoning said it was rural residential and it was covered with a rural preservation act. Now it's time to support your taxpayers and your residents and mean what they say. Why is EDA, this problem has more issues with it. It also is sitting right on top of a registered wetland, not close to it, not adjacent to it, smack dab. On that picture that gentleman just showed, there's little fingers, they've got buildings all around this. In the comprehensive plan, you state if you can't afford to build it, don't get involved with it. Now, neither the EDA can afford to build this out, nor can the county. I assume you don't have the millions of dollars to dump into this. You ought to listen to your own plans, your own comprehensive plan. Why is EDA with all these problems, traffic, wetlands, devastating to the neighbors? It's because it's a money grab. EDA doesn't have the money to pursue this project. What they want to do is buy low use, cheap land, swap around the zoning, and make it high use, expensive land. EDA will get a windfall gain on this, but that money won't go back to the taxpayers or to the general funds. It goes right back to the EDA's coffer. The only people that come out good on this is the EDA. Now, it's been mentioned that the trashing of our comprehensive plan is because it's in the three sixty corridor, so it's okay to rape the farmland. That's not correct, gentlemen. Page thirty of the comprehensive plan shows the area that is the three sixty corridor where commercial development is encouraged. That area starts here at the Courthouse Village and goes east, not one step to the west. And that makes sense, because in the future, there will be a sewer treatment plan and all the other little pockets of development are all to the east of it. Spots out west are to be preserved for beauty and for country living. So when they say it's okay to do this, it's not okay according to their own plan. It's not the three sixty corridor as outlined by Amelia County's comprehensive future land use plan. Gentlemen, you have two hurdles here on this decision. The first one is just to make the zoning change. EDA is not asking for a little elbow room. They want a quantum leap from about the lowest, most benign zoning way over to the most extreme. And in order for any applicant to do that, they should have to prove that their plan is bulletproof, all Ts are crossed, all the Is are dotted. They're not even close to that. Any of this, the sewer, the wetlands, the traffic, all that eliminates that decision. And then, gentlemen, you have a moral issue. You're about to vote on something that won't directly affect you, but will certainly affect other people. Your constituents are about to take a serious hit. I estimate twenty-five percent less land value in my home and in my neighbor's home. For me, that's a hundred thousand dollars. So, ask yourself, are you happy taking a hundred thousand dollar hit on your own properties and your neighbor's properties? And then you have to ask yourself, would you want a industrial park next to your house? So if you can answer yes to both those, yeah, I'd love to have an industrial park in my backyard, and oh hell, I can afford a hundred thousand dollar hit, well then vote yes. If you can't answer those two questions, you're obligated to vote no. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any board members have any questions? What's the board's pleasure?
I'm sorry, I was still thinking, I apologize. I want to focus on, you were talking about the light, light industrial, I think. And so we've got the sheet here, the term, so, I mean, I know not just in what he was saying, but it's been in discussion, you know, kind of in previous public hearings of the planning, as well as just kind of community discussion about the not having sewer there. So can we just, can you just walk us through, I mean, I can read the paper, but just give us some kind of your descriptions of the difference between like M one and M two? You know, when we think about heavy versus light industrial, because there are definitely a lot of people that have concerns about not having sewer and relying on the septic and wells.
You know, your larger operations like, like an asphalt plant, a concrete plant, in the locality I worked at previously, there was James Hardy. They made Hardy Board, which you're probably very familiar with. Hardy Board is a sort of a concrete mixed board that is a heavy water operation, has a lot of noise, a lot of dust, a lot of different, what I call the three Ss, sight, sound, and smell factors that emit from that use. The M one, and by no way, shape, or form, is not going to have any sight, sound, or smell, I'm not saying that. There will be sight, sound, and smell for sure, but the M one has uses that are intended to be more limited, industrial uses that would have limited sight, sound, and smell effects on the neighboring properties. So it'd be more internal uses that don't require the intense water, sewer, natural gas.
If they're requiring a large amount of water, they're simply not going to be able to operate there, because they're not going to get the volume of water necessary for them to operate.
They're going to have to get Health Department approval simultaneously with Department of Environmental Quality approval.
For what they can.
For what they can put into the ground.
So the septic is going to have to be approved.
The Health Department will have to approve the site plan as a part of our ordinances before anything could go through.
Site plan, sorry, site plan generally, but also individual, individual septic systems they have to. When it gets down to the individual business.
Exactly.
So they will have, they'll design a septic system to the use of the building.
Well, I'm not going to speak to what will happen, but it's just like when I build my house and I get a drain field report from an engineer, and I take that drain field report to the Health Department and they approve that, and then it's later inspected by an engineer and that inspection report's given to the Health Department. I would assume that it would go pretty similar, it would be, of course, on a larger scale, depending on what the operations are. Again, with not having that, septic systems are not going to be accommodate any type of water use. So the septic systems for these facilities will likely be for the bathrooms, kitchens, any utility related services that the building might offer, more so than the production or manufacturing of a product.
Right, because you're talking primarily, if we think about, is, it's warehousey kind of things, and so you're, really it's bathrooms to support the facility versus a production of a particular thing, most likely.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just looking through those types of businesses allowed, okay.
Basically, a backup alarm on the forklift would probably be the loudest you would ever hear.
I can't speak to that, I don't want to speak to that, what will be the loudest, you know. There's definitely going to be impact to the neighboring properties, of course, because the property is going from an undeveloped parcel to a developed parcel. But it's just the level of impact with this zoning district is not our heaviest industrial district, it's not M two, it's M one. The landfill is M two, Swift Creek Forest Products is M two, the lumber facilities that we have right not far from here are M two. Our current industrial park is M two, this would be M one, light industrial.
Thank you.
Do you know what the distance is from the creek back towards these houses, of that buffer that's there? Looks like it's hardwood.
I do not know the exact distance from the creek bottom up to the backyard of their houses.
I think it was two hundred feet.
No, I'm talking about across the creek.
Okay.
I'm talking about the other side.
Looks about the same from the Google Earth. Board have any other questions? Yes, sir, please come to the mic and state your name and address.
Thank you, gentlemen. Joe Strannick, Richardson Road. I have a question, I'm not sure how the EDA plans on dealing with this property. Are they going to continue to own it and lease these buildings? Or are they going to sell individual lots? If they sell the lots, what's to keep that future purchaser from coming back to zoning and getting it from M one to M two? And then we're stuck going through this every single time land changes ownership there. If you pass this now, you're going to create a precedent. And just because the dump is there, we don't see it, we don't smell it, the prevailing winds go the opposite direction. The lumberyard, the pallet company, we can't hear it. I have no problem with air land being added to this, or, you know, they were there before I was. I don't have a problem with that. If they want to grow and change theirs, that's fine, there's enough of a buffer there. There's no water, no sewer, I can't pressure wash my house, we don't have the water, it's not there. I don't even like turning onto my road. Three sixty is horrible, there's no turn lane, the crossover they're talking about, there's no turn lane for that either. It's under four thousand cars, so they don't have to do anything, this is a bad idea, bad. I just want you to think about that, it sounds grandiose, yeah, all this stuff is there. Why don't we just go ahead and put it there since all the other stuff is there? You people don't live near it, do you like what's behind Food Lion? I think it looks like hell, I don't want that on the end of my street. Think about that before you mention this.
Thank you, sir. Make it quick, we've already had the public hearing, but I'll allow a couple of questions.
John Canaro, sixteen eighty Maple Court. I apologize, I was in Florida when this came up, visiting my daughter. I was in New York visiting my granddaughter when your other board came up. So this is my first time to experience. I came and settled here because I lived in the rural part of New York State. I came to this area because it was rural. I had a problem that I had when a guy decided to take a bank down in front of my house because it was in a gravel area, I couldn't do anything. From that point on, I got to see. From that point on, I got to see Route 28 from my house. Now imagine a guy that has 90 plus acres of land up on a hill that overlooks a beautiful lake called Goodyear Lake, part of the Susquehanna River. Now he gets to hit, hear all the traffic and see all the traffic on Route 28. I move here, I'm a half mile from the main road, I can hear a little bit of traffic, but I'm buffered with lots of wood. We have neighbors that are going to be exposed because they're going to clear cut most of that area and it open up, and they're going to have no trees, either dirt or macadam, and a beautiful view of the back end of somebody's building and the road noise that they have going on 360 back and forth. And you're going to make this one little plot, what's going to stop you from going across the street on 360 and ripping out that farmland because somebody buys it up and says, I should be treated just like these guys to have a nice little industrial park, and then I'm going to be able to look at those buildings again and the wide open noises. Please think of us when you vote yes on this, as he said eloquently, our places are going to go down. If you want to take 100 feet off the road and make something light industrial there and do it a couple places along 360, fine. But keep your land behind that, bordered with trees and buffered from our homeowners, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Fascinating.
Brady, I'm sorry, I'm flipping through, there's a lot of pages in here. I, he was talking about the clear cutting and seeing the buildings, I thought you said, and I can't find it all of a sudden. Oh, here it is, so there, are they committing to this 200 foot wooded buffer, or no?
Um, th- that is something that they are proposing in the conceptual site plan. It's not a pro, It's not tech, it's not a proffer, proffered condition, this is not a conditional rezoning request.
Okay. And we can't require something like that either then, in that case, can we?
You could put conditions on a rezoning, the board could.
This is not a special exception from it, so it would have to be a conditional rezoning, which would mean a voluntary proffer.
Right.
And the other thing that the applicant can do once they own the, as owners of the property is put, and, you know, restrictive covenants and deed restrictions, that's what most in similar situations, that's what industrial part owners will do.
So you could,
Okay, that's an interesting point.
You can voice your concerns and you can put conditions on if the applicant was to come back and be in agreement or volunteer those, uh, items.
Okay, thank you, because that's a really interesting point, then.
EDA committed to the 200 foot buffer. As it's shown on the conceptual site plan.
Okay. But not in such a way that we can actually hold them legally responsible as it's written, is that what you're, is that what you're saying?
It's technically not a condition of the request, no, sir.
Well, what we have to do is add that.
They would have to volunteer it, is what he, they would have to voluntarily write it in, is what I, what I mean.
It would have to be negotiated and ultimately volunteered by the applicant. This is the max buildings too, right? What you see is what it is.
That includes the 200 foot buffer.
How long did it take to develop our current park?
A long time.
20 years?
Yeah.
I see it and I, and I hear you, I, I, I think that it could help to turn that into a commitment versus the conceptual plan. But I hear you say you're willing, willing to, is what I understand. But he said, he's, he's saying you can commit to it though, okay. Sorry, I had one other question that just popped in my head, but, uh, maybe can't remember it now.
Okay. Any more questions? I mean, I, I don't mind the commitment of the 200 feet, I think that's good. Actually, I think it's probably more than that, when you put some surveyor in there looking at elevations and stuff.
I guess it's just interesting, you know, it's all, it's all a matter of perspective, and I realize the homeowners here are not, who are against this, are not going to like my comment, but as someone who's lived in this county my entire life, when you say, you know, we moved to the county because it's rural, well, for those of us who've lived here our whole life, to hear people who've moved here in the last 10, 15, and 20 years because it's rural, those are also the people who've made it less rural for many of us who've lived here longer, and so it is, it is a matter of perspective, there's many people who've lived here a long time in Amelia that think subdivisions like the ones right there on Richardson are making Amelia less rural, I'm not saying I disagree with that or that you shouldn't be here, I'm just saying it's all perspective when you look at where your home is, your land is, what's coming, we've got a lot to take into account and factor in. It's a lot to consider.
They're talking about the 200 feet buff, 200 foot buffer. If you look at this map, it's not 200 foot, it's close to 400 foot, because they got almost 200 foot on their side of the creek.
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah.
That's true.
So you just can't go it, I mean, yes, somebody might want to go down and cut a few trees out and open something up, but the 200 foot is just half of what it actually is, so you got 400 foot back roughly.
That's important. Who owns that direct side then, Brady, like right on the other, the backside?
The subdivision.
Yeah, it looks like this, subdivision landowners.
Yeah, it's each, multiple, nevermind, I see it, I see, I had to zoom in, I got it.
And if it's wetland on that side of the creek, it's wetland on that other side of the creek.
All right. Well, Joseph, to add to what you said, I, not only have I lived here for 42 years, I've lived on 360 for 42 years. Um, every, every time you drive west on 360, you actually, 360 split my great grandfather's farm in half. So it went from the, uh, County Line Grill all the way up to, uh, Buddy's Place.
Hmm.
From the river tracks to what I call old 360, 6, Route 60, South, South Amelia Avenue, so when the state come through, they pay you a dollar acre, they take your, like, you know, whatever they did back in the late 50s, they, they cut it in half, so. I mean, I'm not a victim of that, but obviously my family has been, you know? So every time you drive through there, you can think about how that was once a farm. But in my lifetime, I, I fully understand that as Joseph said, you know, um, I've seen things come in, I, I, these people are, they're lucky because actually, I occasionally smell the dump and I can hear the tracks on the loaders all the time, I mean, it doesn't bother me because I don't even hear the traffic on 360. When you've lived there for 42 years, I don't notice the train that goes by that's 150 feet behind my house. People ask the train goodbye, I don't know, I mean, I have the, the gift to block all that out, but, but that being said, on 360, a couple of those questions were asked. I fully understand that one day I could have a gas station or a concrete plant next to me because I live on 360, I, I do understand that, and I accept that. And I would never, never really fight it or argue it, I mean, unless it was something truly detrimental, I mean, I'm pretty easygoing because they can put a nuclear power plant beside me, and I,
Yeah, I'll take one too.
You know, because tha- that's better than neighbors. I mean, I, I mean, that's my opinion, but you know.
My friend, it's a chicken house, and most people don't.
You know, businesses aren't going to complain like, like housing developments would, so that's my opinion. Uh, but, you know, it's on 360, it's very lightly developed, you know?
Let, let's look at this from another point. These, just what Sean said. And Joseph, I've been here for 60 some years in this county, born and raised on a farm. I remember when this was a farm where all their houses are. And then we seen a developer come in, there goes the neighborhood, taking another farm and putting houses. I understand they want to move to the country and all, because I have had a little spell in a subdivision in Chesterfield County, Lord help them people down there. They don't know what real life is, we do out here in the country, that's why they moved to the country. We were in their situation when that developer bought that land and made their houses there. But, do they, we, we just had a discussion with the schools here about taxes, more money, more money, more money. We need industry, we're not Chesterfield County, we're Amelia County. We need to get as much business as we can in our county to help our tax base out. So we can provide jobs for this here high school graduation coming up next Saturday, or this Saturday, whatever one it is. I mean, we, we need this, and this is a thought out plan. When, go to Chesterfield, go to Potan. They got them scattered everywhere. They're not, they got into a rut and they had to stay that way. We in Amelia, in the past and now, we keeping all this stuff planned, trying to keep it controlled to get the most bang out of our buck. And, uh, yeah, I, I, I understand where they coming from, I, I hate looking at houses, I've been looking high and in of a cow. But, progress, we gotta have it. Or goats, but I, I had to throw that in, keep somebody happy, but you know, it's a no win situation for some people, and I'm sorry, I mean, progress, that's all I can say.
Ms. Mr. Kingman? I'd like to throw in one thing that hasn't been mentioned, and the EDA hasn't gotten, hasn't gotten up and spoken. But this is, they're a group of citizens that are appointed by the Board of Supervisors to, uh, move us along with economic development. They are very cognizant that they can't do these things if they upset the neighborhood. And they're not a private developer that's going to try to maximize and intensify the, whatever development, they're not into making money, they'd like to get their money back, but they want to create uh, real estate investment, taxable assets, businesses that provide jobs, uh, machinery and tools tax, but maximizing the return on their investment, that's not, uh, that's not one of their goals, so if it, if it helps any to know that this is not a national developer that's going to squeeze every penny out of it and leave, you've got local folks who, who live, work, uh, sleep here, that, uh, have, are pushing this thing along, so.
It's for the improvement in the county, how did we get to the 200 foot deal locked up in this?
Uh, there's two ways, uh, one would be if the, um, EDA chose to develop deed restrictions and covenants that it could record on the property, they could do it themselves, and, you know, that, that could involve a whole host of things, uh, such as limiting uses to a narrower band of uses than the ordinance allows. Um, setbacks buffers, uh, noise, operating hours. A whole host of things can go in restrictive covenants that run with the land, so when, if a parcel is, if it's subdivided and parcels were sold off for private development, they would be subject to those recorded covenants and restrictions. Um, that's one way to do it. Uh, another way would be, um, through a conditional rezoning. Now, at this point, we've, we've had the public hearing, we're going to have a brief presentation letter that explains this, but proffered conditions have to be made in writing before the public hearing, so if we haven't received now, it's too late tonight, but we could conceivably hold another public hearing and they can come forward in advance of that with written proffers, and those would be enforceable too, just as in, you know, under the zoning ordinance.
Could you vote yes or no to the approval with the, pending that they do the 200 foot buffer?
I mean, the, the only question before we tonight is to rezone the land to M1, that's all you can, yes or no, or defer. You don't have to take any action tonight. They're not, we're not, you're not, you don't really have a legal mechanism to impose conditions beyond that at this point. Now, it could be done later, again, if we open it back up, have another public hearing, they're inclined to submit proffers on these issues, I think we could probably go that route. But I don't think you can do it, you can't speculate on that, I, I think it's either yes, no, or defer.
It needs to be black and white.
They, they've committed to 200 feet and it, it could increase what they do of site design.
It could.
So, that's kind of where we.
That's a minimal.
That's a minimal.
The 200, I mean, it depends on what environmental studies, once they start rolling after, I mean, you have no idea what you're going to run into, you have no idea about, I mean, they've got, I take it these blue things in here for,
We have to, no.
Okay, all right, then the squares are septic, yeah, drain field, I mean, we don't even know if they're going to be there or not. That's, that's, it's, yeah, it's just a picture.
We are committed to the 200 foot buffer.
Well, I have to be careful with that, though, I, I believe, I know all the people in the EDA trust them, but it's not only, it's not a legal commitment, I think is, is the problem, and I have a, I, I personally love a problem voting for something that where we don't have that like bound in, and I think Mr. Gore had some good points about having the EDA consider something around, so you just used examples, but I'm going to pick on some of your examples around noise levels, like certain dustables or something like that, as well as hour, hours restrictions, you know? So that it's not operating at 2, 3 a.m., that kind of thing. I have a, I'm going to have a hard time voting yes tonight after having heard the amount of concerns without saying we and the EDA don't go back and at least take some kind of effort to strike a, you know, a balance and find some ways to compromise. So I'm, I'd propose, and I'm not yet putting in a motion, I'm just going to say, I think our best effort, our best approach would probably be to defer it for a month, go work with them on a couple of these things and be able to revisit that next month, that's my thought on it.
As for worrying about the buffer, that's going to take care of itself in a more or lesser way, might not be 1, 200 all the way feet, but if that's a wetland, I have been spot checked. Like Mr. Harvey knows all about it. The big boys up in Washington, they're not going to let you do nothing down there. And these folks can complain all they want. If you own property that is considered a wetland, you don't own it. You don't own nothing, because Washington DC will come in and tell you what you can and can't do. And I have a cropland that they have come in and said, you came up for a spot check, you're farming wetland. Well, I've never seen it wet down there, but y'all welcome to go look at it. And of course, it came back fine, but there's, there's wetland down on both sides of the creek. And that can't never be developed.
Can the, um, can the EDA get this done in 30 days? Yeah, we can do it. Can you still meet your timeline?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Robinson, yeah, because that's a good.
They got, like, R in here is mining the minerals and other coal. I mean, I know it would never happen, but who knows, we lie, we lie, we have something that
Mm-hmm.
50 years down the road that they could bore down five miles and curve it to the left another six miles and mine something. I mean, some of that stuff needs to be taken out, I mean, we can do that.
It doesn't feel like.
Two, two routes according to Mr. Gore. Yeah, one would be enforceable by the county, that would be if it's done through conditional rezoning proffers, that's, that's enforceable as zoning matter. The other would be, you know, a private covenant on deed, deed restrictions.
But.
You could do some of that, depending on what the issue is.
That's a, that's a great example, because that doesn't feel like light, I mean, when we talk about permitting this to light industrial, and I know we could, you know.
Always also just slide that over in a zoning text amendment too.
It shouldn't be there, I don't think. Other than coal.
Okay. I don't think it's part of, I mean, that kind of stuff's not part of your intention for the facility anyways.
Looking for.
Right, so I'll, I'll make it, I'll make a motion then that we defer the rezoning request for a month while, um, county administration and EDA work together on some additional stipulations to better address, uh, citizen concerns.
Okay. Motion on Florida to defer for 30 days. Any more discussion?
How about till next month? Exactly at 30 days.
Uh, next month, next month.
Next month, next month.
That's how you said.
That's what, yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's move on to Rick Benson has a special exception permit.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Mr. Benson, uh, the applicant is requesting a special exception permit for a country general store slash convenience store per section 325 dash 6.3 of the Amelia County Code. Um, his property is located off of 307 at 23800. You guys want me to pause? Do you want to pause?
Or shut the door if they're all gonna. Thank you.
Sorry, uh, Mr. Benson, he, his property is located at 23800 Thompson Lane. It's identified as Tax Map 51-22. Um, he is the current owner, operator of Buckrub Taxidermy. You guys have probably seen the sign right there, uh, the Buckrub Taxidermy sign um, that he has. Uh, his property is surrounded by his family's farm. He came in, I'm just gonna informally to sort of speak to you how we got here to this point. He came in requesting, uh, or to fill out a business license. He wanted to start a new business at his property in addition to the taxidermy. He wanted to open up a small little retail store. Can we get the presentation back up? Small retail store that would sell outdoor apparel, hunting apparel and associated equipment.
In the same building?
In a, I, I'm not sure if it's the exact same building.
It's in the same building.
But I know the building on the property is only about a thousand square feet and it, it just is a metal, sort of metal shop building. And when we talked about it, he was of course very upfront, very forthright. I just told him I didn't feel comfortable giving him zoning certification to operate a store in the agricultural district by right and set that precedent that I administratively approved that. So in our ordinance right now, we have a provision in the agricultural for a country store or a convenience store. This is not gonna be a country store or convenience store, but the use is probably gonna be, in my opinion, less intense than those two uses would be. He's not gonna have gas pumps, which a convenience store would have. He's not gonna have lunch hour where people are flooding into his, uh, property with traffic. He's gonna operate an outdoor store. But it's my proposal to you all, and it's his request to the special exception, that he operate that under that use classification, country store slash convenience store. You could of course put it, because it's a special exception request, you could put a condition that would say must be operated as a retail store for outdoor clothing or hunting because a special exception runs with the property. So let's say he left and 20 years down the road, someone wanted to put a convenience store there with a gas pump. You could put that condition in the special exception that will prevent that from occurring. So that's sort of the overview here. Um, I do have, uh, here, I just wanted to show you his property. It's a, that square outlined is the parcel that he owns. The property surrounding it, the wooded area to the rear and on the other side of Thompson Lane, that's all owned by his family. So we only had to notify one property owner, which was his family. That's the zoning image of the property and this is the structure that we're talking about. I think it's about a thousand square feet. For a retail store, we would require one parking space per 200 square feet of store space. So he'll probably come out to like six parking spaces that he'll need to have, which he has ample room for those as you see there. And I don't know if I could provide any further detail, but if you have any questions, please feel free to answer.
Well, I wouldn't talk to him. I wouldn't talk to him. So I mean, he's planning on reusing the same store. He's just go like boots, clothes. I think it's just a little side gig to help him out a little bit on some, some funds.
Well, it's just gonna be certain times of the year, it's gonna be any busy anyway. Lot of after hunt season, it'd be a dead spell there for.
Well, that's when this work begins.
Yeah, well, his, but I'm talking about customers, you know.
You will comment? I mean, I don't know that I even have the concern about convenience store or anything normally because I mean, if it was practical and so, I mean, you'd have to go through all the EPA regulations. It's not gonna be economically feasible there, honestly. But if it, one day it was, well, then it's.
And it's right off 307.
Then it'd be a great location for it, honestly. Yeah, I, I mean, I think we all know Rick, but he pretty much could speak for himself in the fact that not only has, we've never had complaints, but everybody gives him great reviews. You know, for his business as well as how he conducts it. I mean, there's never been a complaint there. I, 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 I can't, I can only imagine that this business will be as upstanding as what he currently does. You know, it's, yeah, it's, to me, it's a little, a little, a little less. I have no concerns in the fact that he already has a history there. You know, I mean, it's not a completely new thing. It's just a modification.
Okay.
Uh, he ain't gonna have a convenience store. He's not from the right country.
I, uh, I'm making a motion to approve. Oh, I got ahead of you, didn't I?
Got a little ahead of me.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? I'll open the public hearing on this special, special exception permit for Mr. Benson. Everybody wishing to speak, come up and please speak, state your name and address. Any none, I close the public hearing. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the special exemption permit.
Thank you, Mr. Robbs. Motion on the floor to approve Mr. Benson's special exception permit. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Second special exception permit for Richard, and I'm not even gonna try to say the last.
All right, it's, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Richard Rickettsa, uh, is requesting a special exception permit for detached dwelling unit, um, for his property located on the south side of, uh, 360. It's off of Five Forks Road uh, at 12501 Five Forks Road. It's identified as Tax Map 44-19A um, on our, uh, real property identification map. This is an image right here of the property. Um, it's, uh, not far from, uh, the end of Route 38, the 153 side. It's more towards the 153 side of Route 38 than it is, uh, the school side. Uh, he's requesting a detached dwelling unit that would be occupied by his sister. Uh, currently he has like a six, they have, they have a 600 square foot home on the property that they live in. This house would be similar in design to the existing house and it would be approximately 976 square feet. It would feature two bedrooms. The current plan is for the house to tie into the existing septic, which may need to be expanded, um, which will be determined by the health department pending, uh, the results of this, uh, special exception request. Um, the current, the application did include a site plan. Uh, this is the site plan on the screen here. Uh, it shows you on the, um, if you're looking at the property, the, the left side, which I'll refer to as the, the western side, the western side shows the location of the second dwelling with a driveway coming off of Route 38. If you look at the eastern side of the site plan, you see their existing driveway, which comes down to the existing dwelling. Um, the second dwelling would meet all, uh, according to this concept, uh, conceptual site plan would meet all the proposed setbacks as would be reviewed by staff. Um, I, at this time, I don't think I have any further information. I know the applicant is present this evening, so if you have questions for him, I, I'm sure he'd be glad to answer.
What about a well?
I believe that they would tie into the, uh, I'm not sure on that question. Let me refer to Mr.
Is it a bored well or a drill well? Such a drill. That's pretty cool.
Drill.
Drill, small, that's small. Ain't got no 190 foot when that dig, no way. I done helped dig wells. Feel sorry for me if I did that.
I think the planning commission has some concerns that the, the, with the existing house will not be rented. It won't be, it kind of be more or less abandoned after.
I forgot to mention, Mr. Chairman, the planning commission did unanimously recommend approval of the request. Um, and, but with the condition that the property, that it would never be used as rental property.
Which is same condition we put on a, almost same request two, two months ago, so pretty consistent.
Okay. Any more questions? I'll open the public hearing with a special exception permit for the second dwelling. Anybody wishing to speak for or against? Any none, I close the public hearing. What's the board's pleasure?
The move that we, uh, passed is, um, has to permit for him to, uh, add second dwelling.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do you want the requirement about not renting or not?
Well, yeah, definitely not renting. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought that was with it, but.
The planning commission recommended the condition to you.
Up to your motion.
So with that condition.
You got that in? State your, restate your motion, Mr. Jones.
I make a motion that we pass it with the, uh, status that, uh, the property is not to be, the house is not to be rented. It's for family use only.
Okay. Motion on the floor to approve with the stipulation it can't be rented. More discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Hey, Mr. Deal, another one?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, applicant Gregory Poor is requesting a special exception permit for service and repair farm equipment per section 325-8.3. Um, his property is located, uh, east of 153 off of Bevels Bridge Road at 11481 Bevels Bridge Road. It's identified as Tax Map 44-77. It's zoned RR3 Rural Residential. Um, uh, there was a zoning amendment conducted last or completed last year, which added this use authorization to the RR3. And I'm pretty sure that one of the driving factors behind that was, uh, the applicant, um, seeking to obtain this use to achieve zoning compliance. He currently, uh, operates a service and repair shop and from that shop is uh, primarily working on equipment operated at Landview Farm, which is not far from there. The property you see right here, um, the parcel, uh, is 44-78 that you see. He had a, I believe he has like a, a family cut off of that. That's not depicted on this GIS map. It's not exactly accurate. Um, but the really defined driveway that comes down sort of in the center of the parcel is his property. It's sort of like a hill that goes over. And if you've ever driven that way, you can see his house and then you can sort of see the top of the shop. Cause the topography goes down to, uh, uh, slopes down towards the rear of the property. This is, I went and visited the shop. This was an image of the shop the day I visited with an unannounced site inspection. Um, he was working on a couple Dodge trucks at the time, uh, one of which had a big Landview Farm sticker on the back of it. At this time, I don't think I have any further questions. I know the applicant has been, I mean, any further information? I know the applicant has been, uh, in the county as a mechanic for, I think, a pretty long time. I think up to 20 years and originally worked at a Dodge dealership that used to exist here in the county.
He's not enlarging the shop building, is he? He's just.
He's just, he's just requesting this to come into zoning compliance.
Okay.
And it's all family land around it.
It's, yes, sir. It's all family land surrounding the property.
Any more questions?
No, sir.
All right, I'll open the public hearing on a special exception for the business of Mr. Poor on Bevels Bridge. Anybody wishing to speak for or against? Please come up, state your name and address. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. What's the board's pleasure?
I was in a similar position several years ago, so I'd like to make the motion that we approve it.
All right, motion on the floor to approve the special exception permit for Mr. Poor. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Bring us to the next one, Vanguard Organics.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm gonna give a brief little summary. You, you all have some familiarity with this operation as there was a zoning text amendment, uh, reviewed by the planning commission and ultimately approved by the board to allow an agricultural resource reclamation facility, um, in the A5 and RP5 districts. And this applicant was present to describe sort of what, uh, their particular facility would look like under this use authorization. So you guys have a, an idea. He has a, an additional presentation to provide some supplemental information tonight. I'm gonna give you just some brief information. One, uh, just want to repeat, the applicant is Vanguard Organics LLC. And this project would occur, um, at 16120 Giles Road. Uh, it's the, um, Moore Year Dairy Farm that they have right on the Athletics River. The plant would occupy approximately seven and a half acres and be accessed from Giles Road uh, with mu- most of the traffic coming off of, uh, with all the traffic coming off of Royalton Road, I believe, unless the bottom was flooded. Um, and we'll get to further traffic discussion, I'm sure, uh, as the applicant comes up to discuss uh, their specific operation in more detail. This operation, um, there's other ones I think that are being considered in the state. I'm not sure if there's an active one being used in the state yet. To my knowledge, there's not. So this would sort of be a forefront leading thing for Amelia County to have this anaerobic digestion facility. And that's the last thing I'll sort of hit on is it's an anaerobic digestion facility where they're taking manure from the dairy farm and combining it with off-site food waste, uh, and then, um, using that to produce a biogas that will ultimately be sold. And then there's other, uh, materials that are produced from it, including a liquid fertilizer and a solid soil amendment as well. Uh, VDOT did provide some comments on this. They, it, the traffic counts did not reach a point in their scope documents to initiate a required traffic impact analysis, but I really encourage VDOT to go out and drive that road. I'm not sure how familiar each of you are. I'm sure you've driven that road once or twice, uh, before in your lives, living here your whole life. That road is pretty unique. It's got a lot of curves. It's got a bottom with a, a bridge. Um, the, the access from Royalton is pretty tight, depending on which way you're coming from. If you're coming from Palatane, it's particularly a pretty tight curve to cut back. So VDOT did go out. And based on their observations, they recommended that the county have the client provide off-site improvements to the intersection of Royalton Road and Giles Road. Um, and then also I believe some off-site, I mean, some, uh, off-site improvements in the curves to make sure that's wide enough area for the trucks to navigate those curves up to the property. Um, again, Rebecca's here from VDOT and the applicant is gonna come up and he's got a brief presentation. So before we move forward, unless you have any questions for me, he was gonna give a brief presentation. And, uh, the gentleman's name is Nicholas Kuna, um, and I've been working with him through the whole time. And he's been very, very helpful, very forthcoming. And I will say, this is the sixth public meeting regarding this project, so.
Thank you. All right. Good evening. Thank you. Um, again, my name is Nick Kuna, representing Vanguard Organics. In the interest of time, I will run through these slides very briefly. I'm here mostly for questions that you all have. Um, Brady gave a good summary for the, uh, traffic, um, kind of updates and studies that we've been doing. Um, again, our intent is to improve that intersection and those corners to make it safe for truck traffic. Um, the intent is for most, if not all of that truck traffic to enter, um, from Royalton onto Giles Road in a westward direction, um, to the dairy. Um, unless, unless there's a flood and then they'll reroute, but that happens only a few times a year. Um, some other, uh, points to touch on are food waste going in is, you know, strictly food grade food waste. It's not municipal solid waste. Um, it's not, you know, trash. Uh, so it's food grade organics that are going in along with the dairy's manure. It's only the dairy's manure. It's not manure from other farms in the area. Um, and what comes out is biogas to be, you know, trucked. About a truck a day will go into the gas grid and then fertilizer and bedding will be returned back to the farm. Um, so from a process standpoint, that's what we're planning. Uh, the next steps, um, once we get through the zoning process is a site plan review process and we'll work with the county DQ, um, to make sure kind of from. to make sure kind of from an environmental and the zoning and the setback standpoint, we've, you know, crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is. We've held a couple of public information sessions. There really wasn't a lot of public comment or feedback. We sent letters to all adjacent landowners. You know, the only thing that came up was a traffic concern and we're going to do our very best to ameliorate those concerns and work with the county to do so in VDOT. Yeah, that's really the major updates I have and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have, but.
Where's the closest one operating right now?
Operating right now. There is a manure-only facility in Georgia and so but that's the closest digestion facility that we have.
Where's that one?
Georgia. Americas, Georgia. So it's about two hours south of Atlanta. I'm seventy-five. That's the closest. Pennsylvania may be the next one. It's a little ahead of us. So that's a little closer. But yeah, Massachusetts and Vermont are the operational ones that we have going. Can't really speak to other ones that I know of. I don't believe there are any in Virginia. There may be some digesters in Virginia that operate on hog farms. Or if not, North Carolina. And so they, similar process, they take the hog waste, it's running through a digester and it reduces the odor and vectors.
Yes. Yep. Take a little field trip, but I don't know something.
Any other questions, concerns?
So you are doing the request from VDOT?
Say that again?
The request that VDOT had, you are going to do those?
Yeah, yeah, we plan to, there was their recommendation and, you know, we have to get the trucks in there safely and the farmers requested as well. So that's, that's our intent is to improve the, you know, trucks really can't make that hairpin turn in the most direct route from Richmond metro.
Yes or no? Yes or no? Intent?
Yeah, I mean.
It could be a condition the board applies to the permit, especially the permit, that the adequate off-site improvements are made as according to VDOT.
What about the road where they fixed it at the bridge and got it real nice down there? You can bring it up about three, four hundred yards till the turn because, you know, you can land an airplane down there at the bridge, but then all of a sudden it goes to nothing.
This is, this is the best map I have. I'm not sure.
While I live over there, Westside.
Oh, but six oh nine.
Yeah.
Six oh nine from the new bridge up to the.
I mean, you're talking about all this truck traffic. And it, it, it would need, you know, extend that road up to the intersection would be a good idea.
I need that for.
It's not far. Three hundred yards. And then, because Palatane, six oh nine over there, because the road is wider than it is in the mill because I've run up and down a farm equipment all the time. It's no problem once it's a map. I can get to Palatane, it's no problem.
The intersection.
And that's what I heard by some people over my district about the truck traffic.
Any more questions for Mr. Vanguard?
Wish you had their money up there.
Do you board members have any questions?
Well, thank you very much, sir.
All right, I'll open the public hearing on a special exception for Vanguard Organics for the digester. Anybody wishing to speak for or against?
How you all doing? Jason McKay, thirteen twenty-five Giles Bridge Road across the river in Palatane. I don't know how I missed the first two meetings on this or whatnot. You know, I like the concept. I think I've been at a one in Wakefield I was doing for a hog farm. My main concern, of course, truck traffic is mute pointing, hundreds of trucks go across there, log trucks roll over my yard all the time. My main concern would be, you know, rainwater runoff. I don't know if they're storing anything in the open. And I can probably talk to these gentlemen after they're, get clarification from them. But that'd be my only concern on this. And now, like I said, I could probably discuss with them and I don't mean to hold a whole thing up when there's been three meetings already about it. So that'd be my only concern. Now, talk to these gentlemen back there. They seem knowledgeable about it. Go from there. Thank you.
Well, it needs to be pointed out on the truck traffic, that's being taken, a lot of that's being taken care of with Tyson going under. A whole lot of that.
Well, I mean, you lived one truck a day, they said.
Yeah.
Or the gas. There will be some more for the food waste.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else wishing to speak? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Superbowl, does he have any discussion?
How many for food waste?
I'll defer to Nick. Nick, would you like to? Would you like to answer how many trucks for food waste today, you guys? What kind of trucks were those food waste, would that come in?
Yeah. Like a Valley protein.
They're not all coming in on tractor trailer.
Yeah, yeah, that's not even tractor.
Valley waste?
Valley waste, I'm not familiar with valley waste, but it would mostly be, you know, something like a milk truck coming in that already goes in. That's probably the bigger size of the trucks that would come in. Box truck, you know, tractor trailers, maybe, but it's, they're offloading a few pallets. It wouldn't be, you know, huge, huge loads of pallets, but you know, on the larger end. The way those contracts work are those are kind of shorter term contracts similar to waste hauling contracts. They, you know, we have a project and then we come to them and so they're six to one year, six month to one year contract. So as we build out this project will build out kind of where the long-term food waste is coming from. But typically, you know, milk truck size tankers are what would come in to bring kind of liquid food, box trucks, moving truck type trucks, yeah.
And, and while you're at the podium, Ben, do you just want to publicly answer his question about is there anything being stored?
Yeah, from a stormwater standpoint, we, we have to comply with all the DEQ requirements for stormwater permitting. We're going through that now. We're disturbing land and so there will be stormwater runoff. That'll probably be getting caught in a little basin that we'll build next to the site. It will actually, it's graded in the opposite direction right now of the, of the river. The back of the farm actually slopes toward the river and we're going to be well, well closer to Giles Road and the dairy on that regard. So it's not going to flow back into the river.
That's the construction phase itself, right? You're talking about during a construction phase?
Both, both construction and operational, yep.
So when you're operating, then what's being stored outside uncovered? Is it just the manure?
It's the digestate. So similar to right now, the lagoon, the manure is stored in the lagoon and you can, you know.
Oh, right.
And then so that's.
But that's contained.
It's a contained lagoon, yeah. From a waste standpoint, there's not kind of waste sitting outside. The way the stuff comes in, it's, you know, fast acting doors, odor control, vector control, pest control, you know, there won't be waste stored out anywhere. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, saying you gonna have what, up to ten jobs?
Ten full-time jobs.
Could be ten jobs.
Yep.
Are y'all running twenty-four hours a day, same day of the week?
No, so the system will run like that, but from an operational standpoint, it's usually business hours nine to five. Sometimes it might be early, an early load coming in at maybe eight or nine, similar to kind of a farm load coming in early and maybe a little later, but you know, it's business hours. From a, from a monitoring standpoint, operators can remotely monitor the site. So they'll probably have ten to twelve hour shifts, maybe split into two. And then if there's an emergency, most of them are local and they can just come back. Or call the farmer and ask him to shut it out.
Farmer don't one-nine-five, I can tell you that. Can't break your door at some time for midnight.
So, so yeah, it's not intended to be a twenty-four hour person operation, yeah.
Well, there's more income. I mean, more taxes for the county of I mean, you know, we're looking at ways to try to help our tax base.
Yep.
And it seems like it's a pretty good thing because we're taking byproducts that a lot of it's being wasted. We're making a useful product out of it. And as long as we do what the environmental people stay in line with that, no. It's, it's a good thing.
Great. Hey, thanks.
Thank you, sir. What's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion that we approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Motion on the floor to approve the special exception for Vanguard.
Pending.
Pending.
VDOT recommendation.
Yeah, well, yeah, to make it, yeah. Yeah, that road does need to be looked at right there.
Okay, everybody understand the motion?
Do you want to add the specific VDOT recommendation as a condition?
Yeah, with the VDOT as a recommendation as a condition to the.
Satisfy VDOT.
Yeah.
Okay. To the intersection?
That's the only, that's the only, their recommendation is only to intersection.
Okay.
But it would be nice if they could think about that road line and, well, safety standard.
Well, they ain't gonna do no more than you make them.
Oh, well, I know that. But if you don't bring it up, they ain't gonna, that would do nothing.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Does anybody understand the motion? Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. That brings us to Mr. Gore. He got a proffer presentation.
Mr. Chair, board members given the late hour, I can, I'm going to go through this very quickly. And I was doing it from right here unless we want to make it up there. I could do this in a few minutes. And there's a lot in here. This is a resource. And so you can always call me with questions or stop me. The first few slides are really just the legal background. Government can't take property without providing just compensation for, can't take it for public use without just compensation. That's sort of the underpinning of a lot of land use law, including conditional zoning and proffers. So there's just a list of court cases. Don't need to go through those, but when you get to slide three, I'll do, I will mention one of them on slide three, and that's that Palatane Reads Landing case. That's a seminal case in Virginia land use law on proffers. That was a case where the county conditioned they basically required the applicant to proffer a certain amount of cash per lot. And if they refuse to do that, they're going to turn down the rezoning. And that's what they did. So in other words, you can't, you can't, A, you can't, two lessons from that. The, the county governing body cannot require a proffered condition, cash or otherwise. And the county cannot base its decision on the zoning application solely on whether or not a proffer is made.
Right.
And that's, that's still good law, that Palatane Reads Landing case. So conditional zoning was put in originally back in the late seventies. That's on slide six. And this statute really sets out the reasons why. So the reasons are basically to provide more flexibility than the underlying zoning ordinance might provide. Whereby, yeah, the zoning reclassification through a proffer can allow certain conditions that would both protect the community but also, you know, it's, you know, work for the applicant in a way that's unique to that development. So it's, it's, it's very rare in the state law to have in Virginia to have sort of a big policy statement like this. So it was very clear at the time that's, that's, that's what was the purpose here. And that's sort of underpinning all of, all of proffer law, flexibility and voluntary. That's the next one. So what is a proffer? It's a voluntary offer by the applicant for a rezoning, applicant of a rezoning to provide or offer certain, whether they're in-kind contributions or in some cases, cash contributions to mitigate the impacts of that proposed development on the public infrastructure of the locality. So good example, schools, parks, roads, public safety. Those are the typical public facilities that we're talking about. So what happens when a, when a conditional rezoning with proffers is approved, that becomes part of the underlying zoning. It becomes enforceable like we were talking about earlier, just like any provision in your zoning ordinance. It becomes part of the zoning of that property. It conveys with the land and is enforced like a zoning ordinance, should it not be done by the developer or any future owner of the property. So you hear a lot about cash and I'm going to get into that for a second, in a second. It could be cash. It could be in some cases, and it could be actual in-kind on or off-site improvements. In order to accept a proffer through a conditional rezoning, the county has to address that public infrastructure, that issue in your CIP, right? So, you know, if it's, if it, if your CIP doesn't clearly address that need for that public infrastructure that's being impacted by this development, then you should amend the, then you should amend the CIP at the same time of doing that kind of a cash proffer in a development. But it's got to be in the CIP. I talked about this earlier. It's got to be submitted in writing by the applicant before the public hearing. That doesn't mean that a proffer can't change through, through negotiation to the process after that, but it should be submitted before the public hearing. All right, so proffer law, let me go back here. This is the underlying original proffer statute that speaks to the legal requirements. So you've got to, the, the rezoning, the development's got to give, has to give rise to the need for the conditions, right? So this proposed development is creating it's, it's a large residential development. It's going to have a lot of school kids. Therefore, it's going to impact the school system or it's a development of commercial development. It's going to create a lot of traffic. It's going to impact roads. It could impact public safety. The point is, you got to be able to show some sort of link between the development and the impact on a particular public infrastructure for which you're going to accept a proffer. So there's got to be a relation there. I mentioned you have to have it in the CIP, the general issue and, and public infrastructure concern must be addressed in your CIP or need. It also must comply with the comp plan, like everything you do in zoning. You go back to the comp plan and should comply. And if it doesn't, then it's not uncommon for a comp plan amendment to be done at the same time of a significant rezoning so that you're sure that they are aligned. Under this statute, there's no cash. It's just in-kind. It's land dedication. It could be it could be road improvements. It could be, I mean, Loudoun County has developers build fire, fire stations, right? It could be, so in some localities, it's very significant in-kind contributions, parks, things like that. The reason this is important is because this is currently Amelia's proper statute. You had, you had a period there of a decade or two, next slide, where based on the county's growth between the ten-year census in two thousand and two thousand and ten exceeded five percent. So you fell under, the county fell under the high-growth proffer statute, which does allow those localities to accept cash proffers in addition to in-kind proffers. And the county did that for a while. And we're going to talk about that because the county still has some of that cash that has been collected when you had the authority to do it. And we're going to talk about what you could spend that cash on. And I think there's probably some in the pipeline based on approved rezonings that haven't been fully built out that when it's fully built out, you will, until that time, you'll continue to receive cash when occupancy permits are issued. So we're going to, we're going to focus a little bit on that. And then if you're Fairfax or, and it's, Northern Virginia has its own, somehow the Eastern Shore got onto it, but got into that statute, but they can accept anything they want. It's a free-for-all. Use of cash proffers. So this is what I was just talking about. The county's sitting on some, on some previously collected cash for rezonings when you had the authority to do that. And you probably have some in the pipeline. I don't know the inventory, but that's possible you receive some more. So while you can't collect cash anymore with the rezoning, you still have this cash you can and do spend from time to time. Now, what are, what are the limitations? Well, first of all, you look at the cash, you look at the rezoning. What was proffered? What, if there What was proffered, what, if there was cash as a part of it, what was it proffered for? Was it proffered for something specific? Like, you know, public safety improvements or, you know, some particular public infrastructure, road widening, intersection improvement. You look at, if it doesn't speak to that, then you looked at the general policy the county had in place at the time on what you can spend the cash on. You have twelve years, generally, the county has twelve years to spend that cash on the, on the public improvements once you've collected all of them. So that's, say there's a, you know, fifty unit residential development and only half the property, half the, half have been developed and built. You're not, you don't have all the cash for that one. So once you've collected it all, you've got twelve years to spend it. There's an exception to that. I'll tell you in a second. Again, you can only, they're changed to the law in, in 2010, you can only, county can only accept that cash residential proffer for res, for residents when the COs issued. Whoops, I lost my thing here. Changed. Sorry, slide. Go back. Next one. All right, so I'm going through changes to the law and what you can use it for, because over the past twenty years, the General Assembly has tightened it down quite a bit. So it can't, cash can't go to maintain or renovate an existing public facility, right? It's all about creating new capacity. That's the whole point, is this development hypothetically is gonna place new demands on the county that, on infrastructure that you don't currently have or that is inadequate to meet the needs of that development. So we're not talking about renovating an old building, because you want to, even if it's, even if you need to, that's not what cash proffers are for. That's for adding new infrastructure. It's, you know, enhancing, adding on to your wastewater plant, it's building sidewalks, it's doing things you don't already have because this development necessitates it. I'm gonna move on here. Back to that twelve-year, use it or lose it statute. You don't necessarily have to spend all of the money within that twelve-year period of having received all the cash proffers for a particular rezoning, but you have to at least start in a substantial way, either construction, site work, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, the things that go along with construction of new facilities. If you, if you've at least done that, you've, you've met that requirement. Now, if you don't, if you don't do any of that, and there's an exception I'm gonna talk about in a second, but generally, if you don't do any of that, you've collected it all, twelve years later, you haven't even started a project to, to build that infrastructure or improve that infrastructure, then the, then the county will be obligated to turn that cash over to the Commonwealth for use in the secondary road system in the county. So it's not the end of the world, still would go to benefit the county, but you definitely want to try to use it for its intended use and the reason the county accepted it in the first place, if you can. Now, there's one alternative to this. I've never seen any locality do this, but if there is a mechanism in statute to to, to use the cash that was accepted for one rezoning for a, for a purpose that doesn't necessarily comply with why you accept it. In other words, if the need for that public infrastructure has somehow gone away, maybe another development that was in, in, in the queue fulfilled that need, maybe the county had other revenue. Maybe there was a federal grant program and you built that infrastructure another way. There is a way to shift gears and apply that cash to another public infrastructure project that you have to go through, there's a public hearing associated with it. Point is, you're not necessarily locked in to the exact use for which the proffer was accepted. There is a way, if you meet this statute, to use it on something else. Every, every year, every locality over thirty-five-hundred in population files information with Commission on Local Government, so there's an annual cash proffer report. You know, it's, it's, Commissioner Local Government is now part of DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, so you can look there for it. I'm sure Brady knows where it is and staff, you know, staff can get that to you, but it's a good sorts of information as far as what are other, what have other counties been doing, what other locality is doing with their, how much are they collecting, what are they spending it on? And the next slide just shows, that's, that's the chart, that's the table you have to fill in. So this gives you an example of types of things, when, when you have cash for, cash proffers, what you can spend it on. This is the kind of public infrastructure generally that you might spend it on. Now, with that, I'm gonna talk about some restrictions that the General Assembly implemented back in 2016 that were pretty, pretty strict new requirements specific to residential developments and cash proffers. Now, if the county didn't have any conditional rezonings after July one of 2016, then this doesn't really come into play, and I'm not sure, Taylor, I didn't go back and research that, but there could be one or two rezonings that happened after this became law. If that's the case, then the county's gonna have some new limitations on, on, on the proffers. And basically, like I said early on, a proffer has to base, has to be related to the development and the new, and the the need, the development created for infrastructure that, that the county had to improve or construct. That is even tighter now. Now, again, going forward, you all can't, county can't do cash proffers anywhere. This would just apply to some that are in the pipeline from 2016 to 2020, basically. And you can go through here, but, but the proffer now for residential has to be specifically attributable to, to a new residential development. Not only that, but if you're talking about cash or off-site proffers, you gotta show some sort of direct and material benefit to each property. You have to actually do a calculation of public facility capacity at the time of the rezoning and, and, and figure out, you know, to the best you can, you know, exactly what is the additional need being created by this development as compared to our current capacity of that specific public infrastructure. So it's just a lot, it's a lot tighter in showing, in, in having to show, have a nexus, a direct nexus between the development and the proffered condition. That being said, there is a out, there's basically a loophole in that statute that allows the developer at the end of the day to proffer whatever they want to proffer. So again, the county can never force or compel or require any type of proffer, whether it's cash or in-kind. But this statute, even with the new restrictions, does have a mechanism for the developer. If they voluntarily do it and they sign that, that they, they could complies with, with the law, then it's good enough. And that's to give flexibility, because there are developers that might want to do things beyond the limitations of the new residential proffer statute that the statute might not let them do otherwise, you know, that, that benefits their development. And that's what that's there for. We talked, and this is not a slide on this, but we talked about, you know, you had a special exception permits tonight. There's, the difference between conditional rezoning and a special exception permit is conditional rezoning, you're, you're changing the underlying zoning, right? So you're going from red, you know, residential to business. M1 to M2, whatever it is, you're changing the entire classification, and that's when the county can utilize tools of conditional zoning. And they're broader than what can be done through a special exception permit. Special exception permit is, is, it's not a, it's not a categorical rezoning, the, the underlying zoning is already there, but your ordinance says that for this specific use, in addition to having the zoning, you've got to get a special exception permit. And that's usually, certain uses are designated as requiring that. And those permit conditions are very much limited to site-specific conditions typically. And there's no cash involved, except for utility-scale solar, which is a unique statute in Virginia law that allows localities to accept cash contributions related to the project through the special exception permit for solar projects, which the county has done. So that's the difference between SCP and, and proffers. And that's, that's my overview. Happy to answer questions or you can call me later, or we can.
So the five percent of growth reducing to three is what got us out of the gas problem.
That's right. Yeah, and I think the county was notified in that annual proffer report we were talking about from Commissioner Local Government that, you know, Amelia, you're not on the list anymore of cash proffer localities. Which actually was surprising to me, I didn't realize that until Brady called me or emailed me with that. And I don't know how much you have in your account and it's in the pipeline, but there is some, and I, you know, you, staff has those details you can get later, but the point is, there are some limitations and parameters on how and when you spend that. And so it's worth, it's worth looking at that and making sure, you know, you don't need it just sitting there. It was accepted for a reason. You know, you can spend it.
So Taylor, we did ask a couple times during the budget process for those details, what we have, et cetera. When are we gonna get that?
Did you bring the list?
I, I don't, I don't have the list with me. It's in the office, but we, staff has been working on getting all that updated. We do have a binder with all the rezoning requests. It has their statement of proffers with it, which is good, so you see exactly what they, not only the amount that they proffered, of course, per lot, let's say if it was a residential rezoning, but it also has, they proffered it for a certain reason, this much per lot for this, so we're working on that. We do have the binder. I'd say we should definitely, I could bring it to the board at the June meeting, no problem. And I think Josh does have the.
You don't mean, you're not gonna give us just the binder, you're gonna have extracted it into a manageable format.
I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna make a binder for each of you. Now, I'm just, yeah, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll bring a presentation. I'll do a presentation on, on what we have, what staff has.
Right.
I don't know, what I'd like to do, it's in my, you know, long list of to-dos, is determine how much cash is left out there.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like in terms of, if we go through each subdivision
Right.
and can determine six lots are undeveloped in this subdivision, seven are undeveloped here, then we could add them all up, because each of them has different, but that's gonna take a little bit longer time, but I could definitely have the other information prepared to present to the board after June meeting.
I think as a starting point, and maybe this falls more into finance, is how much we have on the books today already collected and what restrict, and what restrictions are on those funds?
I think that, I think Josh has a number, and I think, I, I think it was mentioned.
It was like nine eighty.
During the budget. It was mentioned at some point, because you all talked about spending it.
Yeah.
But I don't remember the exact figure, but I, I know that, that figure is.
It wasn't exact figure, that was the problem. But we need not just the exact figure, but the, the limitations on it are more important almost than.
The amount.
Yeah. And then, can we have the, for those reports listed on page or slide fourteen, may I have the last five years of reports that the county submitted?
Since 2016, since the legislative change?
Well, that was twenty, no, those were since twenty, 2002. It said you had to submit those every year since 2002. The reports from.
Oh, just from local government, okay, I thought you were talking about.
Yeah, so can I get the last five years of those reports? I'm not sure which office or department provides.
I'm sure we can get that. Yeah, sure we can have those.
Okay.
And DHCD's.
Those ought to be easy, since they've already been submitted.
DHCD makes their cash proffer report available on their website. I don't, I think they only have the last two years up, though, but that's just a place that you could do a quick look if you wanted to, like tomorrow or something, DHCD cash proffer. Yes, search that.
I can wait for you to send all five.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, Jeff. That was very helpful.
Sorry, rushed through it.
I had read it in advance, because I was very interested in that context.
Any more questions? All right, we'll move on into the Public Hearing to establish the schedule of appeals for the Me, Me County Board of Equalization. I think we had, we talked about it last week, last month, and we had to adjust some dates. Any questions or comments about the dates? Did we have the public hearing last month?
We did not. We're, we're gonna have that tonight. Properly advertised, the, the two dates to, to take note of would be June the fifth of this year. That's the date that you have to request the hearing, and the hearings will, you need to have disposition of such appeals by October the first. That's what the ordinance is.
Okay. Any questions? I'll open the public hearing on the ordinance establishing the schedule of appeals to the Me County Board of Equalization. Anybody who wishes to speak for or against? Please come up. Here and none, I'll close the public hearing. What's the board's pleasure? We talked about this last month. We just need to change a few dates.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Eastern. Motion to approve the ordinance. Any more discussions? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Brings us to the personnel policy.
Good evening. County administration has conducted the annual review of the personnel policy, and I'll be sharing a sharing a brief summary of the change, of the updates. Two sections concerning employee pay have been added. These sections include addressing temporary pay in Chapter Three, Section Five, and interim capacity in Chapter Three, Section Nine. Chapter Three, Section Fourteen, provides specifics of what constitutes an administrative pay increase. Chapter Five, section sixteen, is added to be in compliance with the Code of Virginia Change for Organ and Bone Marrow Donation League that will be effective July one, 2023. Two chapters, Work, Environment, and Conduct, have been created. Items from the miscellaneous section of the previous version have been moved to the applicable new chapters. The county technology policy that was adopted in August of 2022 has been included as Chapter Fourteen, Section Eight. Additional language has been added concerning FOIA and electronic communications. Chapter Fifteen expands on the motor vehicle safety policy for current and prospective employees, including compliance and reporting guidelines, and we are seeking approval for these updates.
Thank you, Mr. Eastern. I read through it. Thought it was pretty clear. Any other comments from the board?
Make a motion to approve the changes.
Thank you, Mr. Eastern. Motion on floor to approve the changes to the personnel policy. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Eastern. Brings us to the CPMT supplemental funding request.
Chairman, we've got Monica Woodson here to give us the lowdown.
Good evening, gentlemen. I am here on behalf of the Children's Services Act and CPMT to request supplemental funding. Our original budget was four hundred and eighty-five thousand eighty-five. Of the local, that was one hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-six, and the state was three hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-nine. Of the remaining budget, we have fifty-two thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and nineteen cents. And then we are requesting supplemental funding of a total of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. The local funding would be one hundred thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety-seven cent, and the state share of that would be one hundred and eighty-eight thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and three cent. And we're just providing services to youth who are in need of like residential or maybe they're in foster care, and we provide services to them as mandated youth.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
What's your mechanism to get additional funding from the state? Like you've got the hundred and eighty-eight thousand from them. What's your mechanism to get additional funding from the state? Like you've got the hundred and eighty-eight thousand from them. Is that a, on the, is that an automatic process based on certain thresholds and, and services you provide or?
Uh, we. I'm sorry. We, um, there's like a pool of funds. Um, so we would be, we would submit a supplement to them. Um, it would include all these numbers that we have listed here and they would, uh, put out fifty percent of the amount that is approved. Um, and then once we spend that up, they would send out the rest of the funds.
Is there's contingent upon our funding or?
No, this, the state will provide the funding. Yes.
Is that the maximum they'll provide? How do you figure out the breakdown between what you're asking us versus the state?
Um, there's a, a worksheet that you put on the, um, Office of Children's Services website. And if you put in the amount that you're requesting as a total, it will break it down, this, the local batch and the state funding.
So we budgeted one hundred and fifty-eight thousand already. Way I'm reading it.
And some of the youth who do come in, we, um, we don't know when they're going to come in. So, you know, that it does impact the amount that we spend. Um, so, yes.
Mrs. Chairman, that's a really good point. It's, it's not any, uh, hope nobody gets an idea that a budget has been mismanaged. When we approve a budget, we don't know which child is going to show up for the next twelve months or what sort of services they're going to need. And we, we've had some years where we've skated by, but, uh, we're, we've had some significant challenges in the past twelve months. And I, I understand if we probably be going forward as well.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure?
I mean, we don't have a whole lot of options. Believe me, I'm on this committee.
Okay. You want to put in a motion?
I hate to do, but I mean, yeah, I'll make it a motion. Got to figure out where we're getting it from though.
Would the general fund cover that? Josh here? Sure. Okay. Motion on the floor to approve the supplemental appropriation to the Children's Services Act. Any discussion? I was in a social services board this meeting this morning and they spoke of a few places where this money is going to go. So.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor? Of the appropriation of a hundred thousand, seven hundred, twenty-one, ninety-seven cents, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Mr. Harvey.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the county administrator report briefing up to waste management, post fee for the month, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, forty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. Uh, this is up prior month or months. Any questions about that? I'd be glad to.
Did they say why? Because I thought they was losing contracts, going down more. But they have picked up something else. Oh, that's good.
Stuff changed today.
Yeah, I know the way. Well, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. Yeah.
Well, good.
Under tab, under tab seventeen, we've got the CRC's items of interest. Anybody has any questions on anything there? Sure. Mr. Jones will do his best to try to, uh, address it. The DMV report, we collected a hundred and one thousand dollars in the month of March. And the compensation was five thousand, eighty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Food compensation for the year is thirty thousand, two thirty. And unfortunately, I have to report that we are going to be shorting an employee in another week or two because uh, Shandra has gone to work for the state. And we're going to miss her. And then we've got a memorandum from the sheriff's office that the chairman asked to have included. He would like for me to read. This is a memorandum to David Phelps, chairman of the Board of Supervisors from Sheriff Ricky Walker dated May the fifth of twenty-three. Subject is appreciation of fiscal year 2024 budget. Thank you for your leadership and the entire Board of Supervisors for your persistence, passion, and hard work in passing the fiscal year 2024 county budget. I appreciate the many hours you spent researching the information that was presented to you for review. I understand that with a four million over budget dilemma, the board was in a difficult position. Although my fiscal year 2024 budget was not fully funded, I appreciate you working with me and my administration to increase our budget. With your continued support of public safety, together, we will serve the Amelia citizens with pride and meet the needs of our community and my staff. Ricky Walker. So that was his, uh, statement from the sheriff's office. And the last thing in the book is we got a letter from Med Flight. And usually it's a request, uh, for a limited amount of money. But this, uh, letter is to let us know that the, uh, arrangements with the uh, state police and Chesterfield County firing EMS are, uh, changing drastically. BCU health system is no longer going to provide flight nurses to the program. Chesterfield is going to assume full responsibility for medical direction and clinical staffing. And the state's going to pay for it. That's the good news. Uh, we're not going to be chipping in and, uh, hopefully they'll have some, a little more stability and things will work better for them. So please disregard the December tw- December first, 2022 request of fifteen hundred dollars, which was budgeted and has not been sent to them yet.
Yep, fifteen. Does that mean David's flying the helicopter now?
No.
This is chairman.
I have flown.
That's.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And just to reiterate the Med Flight deal, that helicopter is the only one that doesn't bill insurance for transport. The MCVs and the, the ones in South Side, they, they actually charge you insurance, but Med Flight does not charge.
Well, who dictates who come?
That's luck of the draw.
It's the luck of the draw.
It really matters when you need it.
No, I know it don't, but I mean, I just thought there was a procedure to.
Med, Med Flight is, uh, uh, default. That is our first request.
Med Flight was here the Saturday before last, had an automobile accident. The patient was not stable enough to fly. So the two medics or flight nurses from Med Flight hopped into an ambulance with, I guess it was three other providers and a miracle took place. They had to, they had to work really, really hard. And everybody was expecting the worst news. And then the next day you get the report that the guy is sitting in Chippingham Hospital and he's up alert. My telephone rang Saturday night at the dance rehearsal, not dance rehearsal, dance recital. And his name popped up. So he's gone from just terrible, terrible condition, terrible situation to he's, he's his old self now. And in no small part due to Med Flight and some other great local folks that showed up.
That's good. Good news for change.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Bring us to our comments. Mr. Jones, you want to go first?
Yeah, um, I would. Well, how should I put it? Uh, the citizens of the county, you know, we, the few days of the past and the Amelia Day and all this, this county, we need more events in this county like that for people to participate in and get to know each other and just sharing everything that's good about us and our country and all, uh, because I mean, there's so much bad news on TV and everything's so bad, but really here in Amelia, we, we got it pretty good. If you really look at the rest of the world, we could be in El Paso or some of them other places down there and putting up with what they got to do. And, uh, we just need more people to, uh, get involved. Do things. That's my feeling.
Mr. Wyatt?
Uh, you're, you're exactly right. And I think heaven is a bit is a way to open up to get people involved. And that's, that's definitely what we need. We need people actively, physically involved and not just, uh, name calling and, and, uh, uh, criti- criticizing people all the time, but, um, just like Amelia Day, it was a great event. Nobody's paid to do that and it takes a lot of man hours to put on something that big. I've, I've been involved in a few smaller things. So I understand how, how that goes, but, um, very grateful for this community. We've got, you know, a, a huge amount of, uh, people that are willing to help and do, um, to make these things happen. All volunteers. So. Yeah, but I appreciate it.
Mr. Eastern?
No, I think that's a great point. It's just a good time. I was looking at my calendar, remind everyone their next big event for the county then, the county fair, which the dates have changed a good bit this year. So it's going to be June 22nd to June 25th. So, uh, good opportunity to mark it on your calendars. And, um, I think ju- the Juneteenth celebration is before the, between now and then, and I apologize, I don't. Is that the, I was trying to look, okay. So, seventeenth, okay, thank you. Seventeenth. All right. Uh, so that'd be the weekend.
Another thing on the seventeenth too.
So, you know, um, definitely agree on the community events. Uh, we approved three or four again tonight. So, um, you know, there, there are good things there. So.
All right. I do apologize. Um, I gotta, gotta come in the garden club for the love sign. It's three, three years in the works and they got it done and it is, it's awesome. Um, I didn't make it to the, um, grand opening the other day. I was tied up with the car show, but, uh, I did, um, let some of them know that, you know, I appreciate it and I, I'm glad to see it there. And I think it'll be a big draw um, for the county. People go all over the state to find these things and it's, so it'll be, it'll be a small tourism draw in itself and having it in the center of the community is, is the perfect spot to bring people right to the hub.
Mr. Robinson?
I'd like to wish the, uh, Plaza twenty-three, a good graduation and a good success in their career. And also the, uh, county fair. Y'all save your money. I'm going to be in the Dunkin booth. So all you people that hate me, bring hundreds of dollars with because I want to be the number one raiser for the fair this year. So let's do it.
How much is it per vote?
I have no clue. They didn't tell me that. That's why I didn't say bring your dollars.
Twenty dollars, you get a baseball bat and you can walk right.
That's right.
That's right.
That's right.
You bring the money. I'm good.
Are you?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I'm going to echo the love sign, the need for volunteers. The Amelia Day went off. It got off to a rough start this year. But it, the people that were involved brought it through. And same things will happen to the fair. So. I do need a motion to go in closed session. Mr. Moore, would you like to read it for personnel?
Yes, sir. I need a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to Code of Virginia, section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, A one to discuss personnel matters regarding performance of specific county employees.
Okay. If I hear that somebody want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion. It was just.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Motion for to go in closed session to. All those in favor, raise your hand. Hopefully it would be quick. All right, gentlemen, back to closed session.
Hold on.
Yep. Go ahead, Jeff.
Mr. Chairman, we're back in open session. We need a motion to certify the only items discussed were those properly identified in the motion to convene the closed session pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. We need that motion and a roll call vote.
All right, we'll make it a motion.
I'll make the motion to certify.
All right, then do a roll call certify. Jones?
I certify.
Wyatt?
Uh, certify.
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
All right. Any motion to adjourn?
Remove.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.